Evening. Provided by Zoom. Tonight's recording will. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Watten. Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Requested to be excused, absence for this special meeting this evening. Is there motion excusing customer?
No moved.
Second.
By comes from Vincent, second by Mayor for Tim Holloway. Any discussion? Seen and all those proofs say I.
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 Any opposing? So motion passes unanimously and customer one absence is excuse. We now move to our first item of special business, which is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the special media agenda.
So move.
Second. Move by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by comes for Christiansen. Customer Mayhew.
I'm mayor, by the way, I apologize. My computer is doing some kind of update and claims it's going to repeatedly restart. I apologize in advance for any disruption. I'll try to minimize it. Regarding the agenda, because council member Watten is not able to be with us during the special session, but is during the regular session. I move that we remove the executive session from the special meeting. I'm using correct terminology. I believe that we also have it scheduled in the regular meeting, and so we can just cover that then. Second.
Just move by a country Mayhew, second by comes for Vincent to move the specials executives, special session to.
Yeah, maybe.
The close session. To the council. Any discussion? Your pro Tim Holloway.
Um, I thought we were going in different directions. So let me track on the direction currently. Um, customer Watten will be here later tonight. This exact exact session is expected to not conclude as part of our six o'clock and go until 10 o'clock. So I think we can catch him up at that stage. If we move this item out of the 6pm, I'm not sure we have time for the discussion without. I've been up since 5am, guys. I like to get beds on time. So I, I guess, I'm sorry, I'm opposed. Uh, let's keep the exec executive session in there. The quarterly report.
Consider Mayhew.
I I'm fine with that. All I will end up voting against my motion because of that.
You can withdraw.
It's easier to spot.
So is a proposal to move the excited set or the closed session to first thing on the agenda and having the finished report second.
Not wait, we got to finish the first dinosaur. There was a motion on the floor to, in essence, remove the executive session from the workshop section workshop.
Right.
I think we ought to vote on that and disposition.
Sounds good. All is in favor, say I.
Hi.
Hi.
Wait. So.
Wait a minute. Which one are we?
Executive session, the closed session and move and not having it and just hearing this quarterly report.
And that's the option if you want to stay here until midnight.
Correct. By I.
Everybody that said I.
Could we just have a call for roll?
I think we probably.
Do it one more time. We'll probably.
Okay. Those in favor of getting rid of the closed session during the special meeting say I. Those opposed say I, nay. Alright. That is name. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
But I would like to. I I do think that executive session is going to be uh pretty in depth or mainly this in different directions to give it to time. So I would like to motion to move it to be number be the first item on the agenda for our workshop or round table, whatever we're calling.
Second.
Okay, so motion is by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by customer Mayhew to move the closed session to the first item on the agenda. Any discussion? All is in favor, say I.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposing? Right, it's unanimous that we will move it to the first on the agenda. So I guess the that was a little dinosaur. So overall, the overall agenda with the note changes as noted, all is in favor, say I.
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 Any opposing? Okay, so is approved. So we will first go into our closed session. So I'll read it in. So tonight we have a closed session pursuant to RCW forty two dot thirty dot one four zero four B for the planning or adoption of a strategy or position to be taken during the course of any collective bargaining proceedings or reviewing the proposals, made in negotiations or proceedings for approximately forty minutes. Yep, forty. Um, those attending closed session will include Summit Law Sophia, maybe finance and HR Director Jen Ferguson, Budget Manager Drew Batey, and interim City Administrator Mike Chambliss. No actions anticipated to occur following conclusion of the closed set closed session. We will be back here at six forty five, and at that point, we will look for a presentation on the quarterly financial report. So we will be going upstairs.
Mayor, can we? I've been my air conditions that I've been in a ninety degree house all day. Can we hold that this is the only air conditioned room? Can we hold this in this room and clear the room so that we can continue here?
Is it cool up there yet?
We moved an air conditioner into that room.
Yeah, we did.
It's cool.
And fan.
If it's not, then we might have a point of odor.
Kind of other order. So so we do have the plan to go up to the Mount Say conference room. There's air conditioner up there. Um, and we will be back here at six forty five, right? See upstairs. Thank you.
Man, I'm feeling good. This feels really good. There's so much humidity outside right now.
Yeah.
It smells really, it's crisp.
Jimmy? I never got saying that, but.
Yes, Northwest Northwesterners, we like our gray skies, you know, are rainy.
Okay, we just completed our closed session. It's now we got done here about six forty six PM, and the next item is the Q one quarterly financial report, and I believe um our finance HR Director Jen Ferguson will be um leading this conversation. So.
Thank you, Mayor. I am just pulling up here. I think you can see my screen here. Let you going. So I'm just going to do a quick presentation. Um, staff presented to FNA committee last week. So just want to provide, I take that you all received and was in the pocket, the actual first quarter twenty twenty three financial report um as of March thirty first, twenty twenty three. Um, I just wanted to thank um Jenna Walker and Drew Butey for preparing the report, um doing all of the hard work. Um, Jenna's son had a birthday, so she would have been here to present. Uh, and so you get me. So nonetheless, I just wanted to briefly go over um in the financial report. Um, we've created a essentially a financial performance scorecard that will show the council quickly that we're we're doing good thumbs up. Uh, we're doing poorly thumbs down, and maybe there's somewhere in between that we're that we're going to keep monitoring. Um, we wanted to provide for you reserve balances per financial management policy, a quick look at our current cash balances by fund, and then some looking forward as we move into the second quarter, which um has has ended. So obviously, our second quarter financial report will be coming soon. Um, but just a just an executive summary, then the general fund revenues expenditures are on target. Typically, the first quarter of a year is kind of what I often call a bit of a yawnner. Because projects aren't ramping up if they're capital projects and, um, you know, there's some spending going on like salaries and benefits, but you typically don't see a lot of the the activity um on the expenditure side. Special revenue funds are are uh from the first quarter a little bit below the targets due to just the police services payments from North Bend. Um, you know, it's just a matter of timing to receive those payments, but we have received those. So second quarter would certainly look different. Utility funds revenues again. Um, we we see below target primarily due to payment plans uh for folks that the council implemented, but nonetheless, we had very successful uh program with payment plans uh for those who were a bit behind because of the pandemic um so that we've caught up. GFCs, uh, these are receipts in the utility capital fund. Um, these are below the the first quarter estimate. But we but we just wanted to remind the council is that the Snoqualmie tribe, per the sewer service agreement, um is contributing over a million dollars. So that, uh, you know, should be coming as expected. Um, the remainder is obviously due to anticipated growth, but our reserves remain adequate. Um, you can see the city. This is the scorecard that I was talking about. This is the thumbs up where you can see where we're on target uh for revenues and expenditures. You can see the key there, the legend with regards to um negative variances and where we would show the council. Uh, we need to pay attention here. Um, and from the from the targets that are established, uh, we, um, you know, we believe that uh these these particular items would turn around. In the the report, we've got um some forecasts, uh, some compared to the budget. These are by category it from the revenue, um where you have from property taxes down to miscellaneous revenues, and then, of course, expenditures that are broken out by functional classification. Um, this is in the general fund. You can see where we are at. Um, and then you would ask uh for staff to provide how are we? What do you think we're going to do for the remainder of the year to D of Council? Some idea about uh where we think so you can see there uh how we're forecasting a percent of the budget, um where we believe we would land. So again, this kind of relates back to that that thumbs up thumbs down scorecard where uh we think that we're on track. Uh, again, uh, for each special revenue fund, you can see the detail there. Um, I um don't normally read um those kinds of line items. So if there are questions, we're absolutely happy to address that with the council. Uh, utility funds forecast again. Um, uh, this is this is based on that that first quarter. Uh, we need to be, you know, be monitoring that. Um, but nonetheless, we think this has turned around, um and will be updating that forecast percent um uh for the remainder of the year. Same thing for your internal service funds forecast of uh revenues and expenditures. Um, wanted to provide a reserve balance. Look, this is the general fund council set reserve target, a range of fifteen to twenty percent of funds expenditures. You can see where the target reserve range is in that green. That green area, and you can see where our reserves are at. So we see that there are sufficient and um compliance to council's financial management policy reserve targets. Same thing for uh the nonutility capital fund. Um, we have to make sure that we can cover our debt service obligations, and we see that that is the case in our nonutility capital funds with regards to reserves. Also, utility operating funds, there are a set of criteria for uh us to target with regards to indicators like ninety days of operating expenditures. You can see that certainly in the past, we've had significant operating um reserves. At the end of twenty twenty three, we will be on target with the requirement there of ninety days. Utility capital fund reserves, again, um we pay for our debt um obligations from the capital fund. Uh, we see a very sufficient coverage for our debt requirements. Um, and then you can see here's where we have a cash balance overview uh of our funds, uh where we started for the beginning of the year, where our cash was, um, and it looks um that, uh, you know, we've got that that um in- increase or decrease in cash that was planned, uh, because the part of the budget includes a two point five million dollar transfer from general fund to the nonutility capital fund. Um, just a quick look forward. Uh, certainly those revenues collected in the second quarter should reflect reflect improved performance. Um, we will continue. Uh, these are the capital expenditures, design work on the community center. Snoqualmie Parkway project construction, and of course, the water reclamation facility phase three. So uh with that, we've also put in actuals for the council to review and CIP forecast for nonutility funds, um where we anticipate the um twenty twenty three of spending and and receipts would would come in, and we've also got that for utilities. And there we are, um, because we don't have a face anymore, and I just wanted to um congratulate Drew on his new opportunity, um, as he as he shifts uh from us and um want to thank him for all the amazing work that he's done over the years, and I'm very blessed for have been able to work with him for a year and a half. Uh, I'm happy to answer any.
Council, do you have any questions? This is the first quarter report, so we anticipate that we will see the this on a quarterly basis. Customer, may you?
Yeah, I'm not a question, Mayor, but I I just want to um to share with fellow council members my my point of view, which is that this is a fantastic report. The the day I joined the council about six years ago, I asked for the budget report, and I was given a report that's two hundred and eighteen pages long. And um being an accountant, I actually spent time with that report, and after all the time I spent with it, I can tell you I was none the wiser. So this is uh just a fantastic difference from that in here. This is something that Ms. Ferguson's been working on and discussing with the FNA council when she got here. Mr. Booty's been working on this for years, and then our new uh analyst Ms. Walker, I I think sort of finally drove it home for us, but building on the work that that's been done. This focus is what I sort of think of more as a best practice, what you see in corp, the corporate world, which is rather than tell you just where you're at, they tell you where they think we're gonna be. Right? Wayne Gretzky, the greatest uh hockey player of all time. Someone asked him, how how does he always uh get to the puck before uh everybody else? And he said, oh, that's because I don't skate to where the puck is. I skate to where the puck's gonna be. This lets us look forward to where the finances are going to be. This is just fantastic work, and I think it will help all of us understand uh what's going on financially and help our residents understand as well. So I just want to say thank you for fantastic job, you and your staff.
Thank you. Any other comments? Right. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Okay, there no be no further business to come for a council. I would entertain a motion to adjourn this special meeting.
So move.
By customer. Council Johnson, second by customer Washington. All those in favor, say I.
I.
Any pose name? And which passes, and we are adjourned from this special meeting. Right? So this brings us to a regular meeting of the city council. The time is now seven PM, and let the record show that let's see, we took attendance earlier. Customer Watten will be um here shortly, and so he has already been excused. So council, let's please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance, and we will ask Mayor Pro Tim Holloway to lead it. Thank you. We now move to our first item of regular business, which is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
Tell them.
Customer Johnson and approved by or second by who's it?
Council member.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Okay. Any discussion? Consider Mayhew.
Can we just scroll to the consent agenda? Like to remove the agenda bill twenty three dash one oh one from the consent agenda.
Okay. Any other discussion on the agenda? Tina, all those in favor, say I with the the movement of AB point three one oh one.
I.
Agenda.
Alright.
Any opposing? Or none, the motion is approved as amended. Like I heard customer running like. Yes, okay, please note that customer run is in attendance is here. Right. Right next, we move to um the first is first of our two appointments tonight is we have two police officers swearing in ceremonies. The first is for Police Officer Drew Ward. I will hand it over to our interim chief Brian Lynch to do introductions, and as the mayor, I will administer the oath of office.
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor, city administrator. So I have the pleasure of coming before you tonight um to do, in my opinion, has been the greatest thing that um I've done so far in my short career as interim chief, um and that is to welcome new police officers onto the force and into our community. Standing here is Drew Ward. Um, he came to us back in October of last year, so it's been a long process of when we finally hired Drew to wait to get into the academy, to finally go to the academy, to stand out and graduate through the academy with with high marks. And finally get back to us two weeks ago. So that's how long it actually takes for someone to come back and start on the road with a field training officer. Drew comes to us by way of um Houston, Texas. Um, and as much as I'd like to hold that against him, we'll save that for the lunchroom. Um, so Drew is a baseball player, and he pitched for Concordia University where he earned a bachelor's in geography and environmental science. So I'm really expecting high marks on his geography of the city while he's in training. While he was doing that, in his spare time, he also joined the Army ROTC program at the University of Nebraska where he earned his commission as an armor officer. Uh, he has joined the Washington Army National Guard in August of twenty twenty one and is currently a platoon leader with that unit. So he has been more than I could have expected from this young man. I mean, he has fit in with us from day one. Um, he has gone out of his way to build relationships within our agency already. Um, he has friends within the the ranks of the the police department. Um, and he in the first two weeks has shown that he is ready to be out on the road, learning and serving this community. So this is Drew Ward, and I'm just extremely proud for him to be here. Um, I I got to um to pin his badge at the graduation ceremony at the academy a couple of weeks ago. His family is from that they're in Texas and, you know, cannot be here. Um, so I'll be playing the role of his father and mother today again by putting his badge on after he is gets sworn in. So go ahead and step up there, Drew. I don't see one. Am I?
I.
I Drew Ward.
Having duly appointed the Office of Police Officer of the City of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Having been duly appointed to the Office of Police Officer of the City of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my ability.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of City of Snoqualmie.
And that I will support and maintain the order ordinances of the City of Snoqualmie.
And the laws and constitution of the state of Washington and of the United States of America.
And the laws and constitution of the state of Washington and the United States of America.
Excellent. Congratulations. I had the opportunity of attending Officer Ward's um academy graduation, and so we appreciate your serving for us, and congratulations on becoming an officer and graduation. And next we have our newest officer, Marcus Sanchez.
So in the time that I've been with the Snoqualmie Police Department, um, I've noticed a lack of interest from outside agencies for lateral officers to come here, and I think that it has a lot to do with the the mass exodus of departments of from a few years ago, and I think when the music stopped, everybody had a chair that they liked. But we were lucky enough to get this guy. Marcus comes to us from a a career in the State Patrol. He worked how many years there? Seven years, and then decided that he wanted to change professions again and wear the green of the game warden and work for Fish and Wildlife. Um, he did that for three years. He is a member of our community, so he lives here in Snoqualmie with his family. He has been an officer with us just since the beginning of the month, and I've been checking up on his um daily observation reports that have to be written every night about what he's been doing. Um, he is going to be a successful officer here with the city. Um, I would foresee him probably being off of his field training sometime towards the middle of September and being in a car by himself, patrolling the the mean streets of Snoqualmie. Yeah. So um all in all, we are super lucky to have him. He is going to be a resource to the younger officers. I am a big proponent of having people with experience come to us so they can automatically move into um the unofficial leadership position that I know that he's going to be able to take right away. So um Marcus, let's get you sworn in.
So I. Take your name.
I Marcus Sanchez.
Have been duly appointed to the Office of Police Officer of the City of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Have been duly appointed to the Office of Police Officer of the City of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Do so solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my ability.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my ability.
And that it will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Snoqualmie.
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Snoqualmie.
And the laws and constitution of the state of Washington and the United States of America.
And the laws and constitutions of the state of Washington and the United States of America. And the laws and constitutions of the State of Washington and the United States of America.
I'd also like to invite Marcus's family up and have his wife Kristin put the badge on his uniform.
The third appointment this evening is appointment to the Planning Council, or Commission, excuse me. The purpose of this is to confirm the mayor's appointment to, of Ashley Kilcup to the Planning Commission. Ashley Kilcup has an architectural degree from Washington State University with experience in early design guidance, design review board, and MUP entitlements, as well as commercial and real estate experience. She has a decade of practical experience and represents a business within the Snoqualmie Business Community. Councillor may have a motion to confirm the recommendation.
So move, second.
By Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, seconded by Councillor Benson. So any discussion? Seeing then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? So passes, Ashley Kilcup is unanimous, and she will be appointed to confirmed her appointment to Planning Council Commission. So I don't know, is she here? Well, that is you, oh, congratulations. Did you want to say a couple of words or just wave and, thank you for serving? Thank you, congratulations. Okay, moving on. So at this time, we'll provide time for residents to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Just a few ground rules, Snoqualmie residents who are not present have the right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city, city in an efficient and orderly manner. Therefore, comments will be limited to three minutes each. Please wait to recognize and state your name and city of residence. Director, comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note that this is not a time to ask questions of council, mayor, or staff or engage in debate. And please respect the decorum of these proceedings as all due respect will be afforded to you. So again, these are items that are not on the agenda this evening. So with that, would anyone like to speak to any concern that's not on the agenda? So please raise your hand in the council chambers or online. I'm not seeing anyone in, no. Others. Okay. So Caroline Villanova. There you go, Caroline should be able to speak now.
Awesome, thank you so much, Mayor Ross, and thank you, Snoqualmie City Council. I am unable to be there in person with you, but I am Caroline Villanova. I'm the National Heritage Area Coordination Manager at the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust, and I reside in the city of Seattle. I'd like to just start by appreciating the city of Snoqualmie as a really strong partner to the Greenway Trust, and also a city with rich history and heritage that makes this place in the city of Snoqualmie so special. And so on top of this, the city has made really amazing commitments to keep this layered history and rich heritage a priority, which has really made its city and local partners incredible highlights with, within the Mountains Sound National Heritage Area. So where the organization and place that I'm representing. So currently, there's a proposal for a future model train museum that is being advanced over opposition by the Snoqualmie Tribe due to cultural sensitivity of the specific area of development. And also, there is a lack of support from the Northwest Railroad Museum, which is a significant economic driver in the city, as the project itself, as it currently stands, has a lack of community consensus. And so moving forward with this project in this way can be really damaging to some of these important relationships. And I, I think that the current proposal kind of misses the opportunity to consider the Model Train Museum in a way that benefits from that expertise and perspective of the professional historians that exist in the valley and the tribal nations who are working actively in and around the city of Snoqualmie to both preserve, celebrate, and interpret the history and heritage here. And so I think my ask tonight is just to, for the city to press pause on the Gateway Park Development and to really engage in more dialogue with both the Snoqualmie Tribe and the Northwest Railroad Museum and the Model Train Museum about how and where a model train museum could be developed in a way that helps to strengthen and reinforce the city's commitment to preserving and sharing this heritage and history. I know that the city really values both of these partnerships sincerely and have worked closely with both the Snoqualmie Tribe and the Northwest Railroad Museum for years. And so I would just really like to encourage the city to continue to build these relationships and continue that through this project in its entirety as well. And that's, that's it for me tonight, I think that's on the agenda, but I just wanted to say thank you for the time, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks Caroline, is there any other speaker that, for items that are not on the agenda? Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. So the consent agenda contains approval of the city council regular meeting minutes stated July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, and special meeting minutes stated July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Approval of the claims report dated August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. AB twenty-three one hundred, resolution approving the selection of CDK for the Storm Pond fencing repair. And AB twenty-three dash one oh two, resolution sixteen fifty-nine, designating agents to receive claims. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move. Second.
So it's moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, seconded by Councillor Washington. Any discussion? Should we go to public comments, or any public comment regarding any of those items on the consent agenda? If so, please raise your hand in chambers or online. Okay, I'm seeing then. Councillor, do you have any discussion regarding the items? Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Only one, and I apologize, I'm out of step. We did pull the one item off consent agenda. I, I propose it goes down to public, parts of public works, not right after consent agenda, which is the whole process.
Second.
Okay, to move my Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, seconded by Councillor Mayhew, to move item AB twenty-three dash one oh one, which normally would follow the consent agenda in discussions, but move it down to the public no, Public Works Group area. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so getting back to the approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Right, so consent agenda is approved. Moving on. Let's see, make sure we got the right one here. Okay, is there, so public safety, is there any community, community report regarding public safety?
At our last public safety meeting, we discussed that we've been notified that there will be a price increase associated with using the squad jail. In addition, the interim chief recommended going forward and public safety committee agreed with joining the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. There is no cost to join us, it will provide additional resources that can be used to investigate internet crimes against children in our area. In addition, there are some public outreach that is done by this group, and so hopefully we can see some benefits there as well with helping families be prepared.
Thank you. First community report, then for community development is AB twenty-three dashes zero nine seven, Pacific West Rail Model Train Museum. Councillor Johnson, would you please read this summary and motion?
Yes, the proposed Pacific West Rail Model Museum would be located on city-owned property, commonly known as Gateway Park, which lies at the southwest corner of the intersection of Railroad Avenue and Snoqualmie Parkway. The attached exhibits development agreement and ground lease allow the project to move forward. And you want the motion as well? Yes. Okay, move to approve the development agreement and a ground lease for the Pacific West Rail Model Train Museum to be located on the public-used parcel known as Gateway Park with the agreements to be substantially in the form provided herein and authorize the mayor to sign.
Seconded.
So moved by Councillor Johnson and seconded by Councillor Benson. On AB twenty-three dash zero nine seven, Pacific West Rail Model Train Museum. First, we'll go to public comment, is there any item, any comment regarding this particular agenda bill? So please raise your hand. In chambers or online? I see. Okay, Caroline Villanova.
Hi, Caroline again. I think that my original comment still stands for this proposed action as well. I just did it out of order, and I apologize for that, but thanks for, if you could edit the, the order there, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, any other comments? Yes, please stand and put in your name and city of residence, please.
Hello, my name is Carson Maestas, I am a resident of Snoqualmie. Anything else you need, mayor?
Um, no, you have two minutes.
Yeah.
You said that.
Um, I just want to thank Caroline B. Noah for voicing her concerns about it. I would like to note that as a resident of downtown Snoqualmie, that the concerns that she shared are ones that I have contemplated quite a bit and have also discussed with other members of the community. Right now, as it stands, there is no support from the community for the development as discussed in the special council meeting two weeks ago. So I understand that there is kind of an idea to find a way to connect the proposed model railroad museum to the to the actual Northwest Railroad Museum. It doesn't quite take into account the reality of what people are coming here for. I don't think that it will drive the traffic that you guys are hoping it will to downtown to help support and help revitalize the downtown area. I think there are better places for it to go. If it is something that, it is something that moves forward regardless of whether or not there is public support, especially here in downtown. That's all.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Online, to raise your hand, it's star nine. And then star six to unmute. Okay. Right, I haven't seen any other, any other public comment? So we have our interim city administrator, Chamus, would you like to introduce this?
Sure. Good evening, council members. So before us is the two instruments that would permit this development to move forward on the parts discussed. There is a ground lease which covers the, the use of the land and the development agreement, which covers the, the building, the building. The documents are linked. One, you can't have one without the other. So should the development agreement, the clause in there fail, the ground lease fails. So they are connected. Prior to the council meeting, we received, received a list of concerns from Councillor Mayhew. Answers were provided as quickly as we could turn them around, if everybody had a, had an opportunity to review those or not. I believe some of those questions were, were due to a confusion on, on which version of the document that was being reviewed. Some of those were addressed, I shared the same concerns. City administrator should not be making decisions that the planning commission has jurisdiction over. Totally agree with those concerns, wholeheartedly, in fact, that's the first thing, I can't change this now. We do have the applicant here, Peter Hamley. They do have a presentation, if you'd like to see it again, that's an edited presentation, so it's not, you know, the full slide deck. Or if you'd like to better spend the time asking questions or, or other. We have support individuals here, the architects here. Also, who can help answer questions?
Councillor, would you like to see a quick overview of the project? Councillor Johnson?
Only if there's anything substantially new in it, otherwise, like we've seen it a few times. That's right.
Okay, Councillor, any discussion?
I guess, well, I guess the one part.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Forgive me. So in section four four, A, B, and C, it says, by decision of city administrator, I think you would, you partially address that. Are you revising that to be the planning commission? Or you, how are you revising those sections from city administrator?
In which document?
I am not sure, I'm, I'm going off of your email comments, if you know which sections those were.
It is.
Or which document?
It's the D.
Well, sure.
The notice to proceed.
Yeah, notices to proceed.
Yes, so that is currently designated upon the city administrator, but understand that, that really means the finance director, because the city administrator is going to have the background to review those financial questions that need to be answered prior to, to moving forward.
Why is that not counsel?
Some of this information is confidential. Maybe you could say it better than I can, but I believe some of the donors may not want their financial information to be entered into the public record.
Councillor Mayhew?
Yeah, just to understand the answer, are you saying that information about donors would be provided to the city and not subject to public disclosure laws? That some employee would have access to information that the public could not make a public disclosure request for?
I believe when you're talking about people's financials, that is the intent of that clause. Okay, so.
Give me to address that, Nina.
Yes, the city attorney.
So it's not uncommon for cities when reviewing financial terms and conditions to review information that may be unavailable without having it become a public record. And then even for information that is submitted as a public record, there are public records exemptions that can apply to certain types of financial information, not all types of financial information, but some limited types. And so I think there's some flexibility in this document to allow donors to have confidence that they're not going to be opening up their tax returns to public scrutiny, just because they want to give money to a museum, so.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Okay, fine, and I'm not sure, I don't, I don't want to see the list of donors, okay? But I do want assurance from finance director, city administrator, that the plan is looking good. The funding is there, but I believe the final authorization needs to come from council, but this is a, this is a matter beyond the authorization authority of the city administrator. So I would recommend that we make that city administrator, finance director recommendation and approval of the council.
So just as an additional comment on that, and I'm happy to discuss this more in a confidential setting if you'd like, but I, I typically counsel. I I typically counsel, C O N, C O U N S E L, the council, to stay out of permitting decisions as much as possible. And in a development agreement, when you're giving the green light to proceed with something, that's typically an administrative task. That's not typically a council legislative policy role. That doesn't mean you can't make it one. It's your call whether to do that or not. It's just typically not the way I would recommend a city proceeding with that type of decision, but your call.
Councilor Watten?
Thank you, and I guess I would share in in some of that concern, but I think that would it suffice if we redacted the the name and and address of the donor so that we at least can see that there's a legitimate commitment made for this project?
Well, and I'm not, again, I'm sorry. Um, however, however, the administrative director want to share that information with us, I I leave it up to you guys, okay? I I trust you in the vetting out of the list that yes, this this fits the hole we have or it doesn't. And if you want to show us a redacted list of this black line gave us this much money and that black line gave us that much money. Uh, fine, I leave it up to you guys. I do want your recommendation that says the funding is in place for this to go forward. Do you, the council, agree? Do you have questions? And we proceed from there. To your point, though, I do this is slightly different in that this is city property that this is being done on. So we are. We are the owners of that property approving a development as owner, not at nationally as city, but as owner that it should proceed. And I think council can take, take us, take a stand in that and make that decision.
With respect, you would not be the pro- project applicant. You would not be the one who would have the the money at risk if there was a political delay in approving a permit that would otherwise be required to be approved. And so that's why I suggest it's typically not a good idea for council to be the thumbs up or thumbs down on a permit process because that's typically an administrative job. And there's potential personal liability for council members if they get involved in permitting decisions. So that's why I typically say stay out of that.
Great. I'm not proposing we get in the middle of permitting. I'm just proposing that we are in the middle of saying, yes, this piece of property, you've got your business plan in place and funding secured to go do it. We agreed to do this lease with you as the owner of the property to go ahead and do it. Okay, so I agree, council getting in the in the middle of permits would be a mess. I can guarantee it. I probably one of the best. So no, I don't want to. I don't want to get involved in the permitting. That's probably handled by community development and staff and planning department. And but I do want, as far as do we think this, I'll call it business plan closes and we're assured that this is a viable thing to occur on property we the city owns. Okay, which is outside of permit.
Is this what we're doing right now?
Say I did wrong.
We're doing right now, right? Going through the lease and development agreement. We're asking you to to prove it. So we're currently going through the lease and development agreement, which is all part of that. Right?
Yeah, I'm asking for those those changes and then let's talk other things, but with those changes. I it depends how you want to handle it. I think those changes ought to be made. We can either do that tonight or we take this back to com- to committee.
Well, we need to discuss it with the other party of the contract, so can't just do that tonight. This was a negotiated instrument, so we can't unilaterally make changes. Okay, I wouldn't recommend asking across the aisle because he's being represented by the old councilman. That's not kosher.
Okay, so let's walk the dinosaur out and kill it or not. So I I motion to make those changes in sections four, four, A, B, and C to be recommendations of city administrator and finance director, approval by city council, and that this go back to committee for discussion and referral back to us in two weeks. May I have a second?
Second.
So it's moved by Rep. Tim Hallway, seconded by Councilor Mayhew for, I guess, this development agreement, item four, A, B, and C regarding recommendation by city administrator, finance director, and city council. Sorry. And we, the applicant has raised his hand. Would you like to hear from our applicant?
Would you hear from?
And we also have.
Kara, whether she wants to get in before he gets, yeah, I I'm done.
Unless this is any discussion, so Councilor Kristin?
Yeah, well, my recommendation and I think my request would be to speak to the city attorney before we go any further down that road. If there's even the possibility of personal liability attached into a decision that we would make. I would want to know exactly what the possibilities are to take, so that it has not been fully briefed, which it sounds like it has not been up until this time.
Councilor Mayhew?
Yeah, I I think the notion that a city council cannot decide what happens on city property without having personal liability of council members is absurd. And I think that's exactly what we are elected to do, amongst other things. Now, I think that city attorney was making a specific point on council getting involved with permitting. And I couldn't agree more with the city attorney and council member Holloway that the that is a very bad place for council or council members to go. I don't think that's what is being proposed. I think the idea here is a very high level approval that, hey, it, you know, funding's in place, it's a go. Why? Because I think we don't want to end up with a city, a piece of city property with a half-built building on there. Now, some might say, well, why on earth would he ever go do that? The answer is, well, he probably wouldn't, but that doesn't relieve us of our responsibility to sign up on that. So I think that's all we're looking for is, yeah, this is a go. Not get into permitting or into any of the specifics, and that's why I think that the the answer was, yeah, black it out. Just just let us just have a discussion. We may not need to see a list at all. Let us have a discussion of count, you know, city administrators, finance director, you guys have looked at this, you've talked with applicant, this looks like a go. We could ask you a few questions, you know. You know, what happens if there's a recession tomorrow or what happens? You know, we could ask a few questions. Presumably, they'll be answers. I doubt the applicant would be moving forward without answers to those basic questions. And then we say, okay, good, go. But I think to just sort of blindly say that now, when to my understanding, there's none of the money, capital money raised yet, is just perhaps a little premature. So that's what I think is being raised here.
Rep. Tim Hallway?
So I guess I won't get into that. If if we, if we are going to consider this and other things and take it back to committee, I absolutely want you there to tell us where we're going wrong. Every meeting.
And if I can just follow up on that. So the the idea behind this agreement is absolutely to give the council absolute 100% control over how it uses its property. The notice to proceed, which I understand the motion was directed to amend the notice to proceed process. That is a city administrative approval. And so the notice to proceed has, as it's drafted now, and you can change it as much as you want. But as it's drafted now, it says if the applicant meets these criteria, then the city administrator may approve it. Now, if the council wants to make the want to be the one to make the decision, that is totally your call. But the idea behind this was for the council to say, okay, what criteria do we want the applicant to be able to meet before we give him the notice to proceed? So that you feel confident that the city administrator or the administrator, whoever, the mayor, whoever you want to make the call, can make the call without getting the council involved in a permitting, which a notice to proceed is a yes or no, proceed or do not proceed. I'm just cautioning that that is a dangerous place for council members to be.
Councilor Watten?
Thank you. And I can understand the the idea behind, we want to make sure that this is not a half-built building. But I'd be very interested to hear from Mr. Hambling and his group over the financing and and how he would structure this, knowing that he has a two-year window to put the 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 money together. Would it be collected upfront? Would, is it a combination of that and pledges? Because I believe he's moving forward only if he has 100% of the funding in place and perhaps even 120% of the funding to assure that this project is completed. So I I'd be very interested in hearing from the applicants.
Mr. Hamling?
So on our side, we would not begin to take the road apart until we have 100% of the funding in place. And that's pretty obvious why. So having not raised this kind of money before, I don't know how it's going to go, but my guess is, based on a number of individuals who I have in mind, first of all, they're probably not going to want their names associated with, at least not publicly. I don't blame them. And secondly, I'd be surprised if they put the money in the bank right now with two years to go or or maybe less. So my guess is it'll be a commitment, which will be pretty, pretty solid. 100% watertight? I don't think so, but but pretty solid. In any case, once we get to the end of this, we're ready to go. We have the funding in place. Then I would go back to each one of them and say, okay, we're ready to hit the green light. Are you still good for it? And if they are, then I would come back to you and say, okay, we're going to take the road apart if you let us go ahead with the building. So we wouldn't begin to break ground before that happened. It's just too risky. And I'll add a funny note, and that is assuming I don't get thrown out of the basement by my wife Lori. That may change things.
Thank you. So Councilor Hallway and then.
Yeah, I I guess we may be actually having notice to proceed with capital letters and notice to proceed with non-capital letters. Okay, so I I you guys need to help us separate those out. I agree as far as permitting notice to proceed, that is a city administrator function. As far as a project milestone to proceed, I think that in this case can be counsel to say, yes, we see these things lined up and we should proceed to the real notice to proceed versus the small capital letter knows to proceed. Small letter, not small capital.
Councilor Mayhew?
Yeah, Mayor, so in the interest of trying to move this forward, my sense, well, let me back up. I have some concerns that I think need to be addressed, but I believe they will be addressed. So, but I just think they need to be addressed before we move forward. For example, my own view, I don't know if it's shared by the council members, but my view is we should have a consultation meeting, whatever you would like to call it, with the tribe before going forward. Why? Yes, we met with them in March and as the council's liaison to the Snoqualmie tribe, I was at that meeting. And there's an exchange of 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 thoughts on this, and that's fantastic. Since that time, the tribe has communicated to us, they want a further consultation on this. And I think we have to do that personally before we move forward. So I know, Mayor, you're working on putting that together. And it's soon, but there's a little bit of trouble getting calendars matched up, but it's going to happen. I think we ought to do that. I think there are some other concerns that I sort of put into camp, sort of broad, sort of concerns with the project, which are things like, you know, have we really thought through a parking plan or a traffic plan? What'll happen if everybody comes at once? You know, when you sort of do the math on their financials, you kind of get a sense of how many people they're thinking will come per day. It all seems to make a lot of sense. Looks like it probably will work pretty well, but you know, what if it doesn't? What if they all come at once? Or what if more come than we thought? So there's, I just think these are, these are not things that I don't think you've all thought about. I think you have. I just think.
Councilor, maybe you, I think, so we still have.
Did I have the floor?
We still have a motion on the table.
Am I not allowed to speak to it?
Does this have?
Point of order?
Speaking to the motion?
Point of order? Am I not speaking to the motion?
You're actually speaking to the whole project. So we still have a motion on the table regarding 4.4 notice to proceed A, B, and C. So Councilor Johnson?
I believe that the motion was about referring to committee. And so if we were to approve this motion, then our discussion tonight would end and it would go back to committee without any further discussion. So I think that if we wanted to have other things occur between now and reconvening to discuss it further, that an emotion might have to be made to amend the motion that's on the table.
But all discussion stoppage, just that portion.
Second better. Break in some.
Actually, we'd only go back to committee just for section 4.4 A, B, and C.
So we could continue the discussion.
Right, so we need vote on that, and then we can continue the the conversation on the rest of the lease and development agreement. Councilor Benson?
But if we have other issues like Councilman, Councilman Mayhew were, was addressing, why could we not also address those in committee as well? Do we need to amend the motion so that we can address those other issues in committee? Would it, would that, is it, is it an issue of there's a motion on the table that that doesn't fit that and we need to fix that motion? Or is there some reason that we wouldn't be able to address the things that Councilman Mayhew was talking about in committee?
Well, I guess maybe I'd want to hear the motion again, but it sounded to me like it was just a motion to refer section 4.4 back to the committee, section A, B, and C, to talk about modify the notice to proceed, require council approval after city administrator and finance director recommendation. So it's a pretty narrow motion. I think that leaves a lot left to talk about tonight. If you want to talk about it, if you don't want to talk about it tonight, then you could, somebody could amend the motion to refer the entire document back to committee and.
Rep. Tim Hallway?
Two comments, one. Oh, we get first one. I'm, I'm want to be very careful not to subject this project to death by calendar. Okay? If if the applicant is is amenable to ironing some of these issues out, I I propose we, again, go to committee and come back. Okay, but that gives two weeks for those discussions. You're talking about the invitations out there. Let's have a conversation. If we don't have a conversation, that's saying something. Okay? I will amend my motion basically to take the development agreement back to committee for 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 discussion. Period. I, my motion, my proposing motion is not limited just to section four, four.
Second.
This has been moved by Rep. Tim Hallway, seconded by Councilor Mayhew to amend the motion to take the development agreement back to committee. Any discussion? Councilor Benson?
I just want to second or no, it's that it's not, I'm not seconding. I want to agree with with Councilman Hallway's concern that this gets killed by calendar because I don't think that, you know, I'm very excited about this project. I think it's, I've spoken to a lot of members of the community who are also very excited about this project. And I think that we need to address all of the concerns, but remember that we want to get this this going if we can get it going.
Councilor Mayhew?
So as I was trying to say, there's a set of concerns which I was talking about and which have been shared with all of the council members in an email, which I'm happy to give to you, Mr. Hambling, or any member of the public who wishes. I've got a copy right here to hand to you if you wish tonight. My purpose is that we get through any remaining issues and get done with this. My purpose is that we get through any remaining issues and get done with this. That's the purpose of my email. My concern was that in the last three weeks, I've had several committee or council meetings on this. A lot of items have been discussed. And my perspective, now, just to be clear, city administrator has sent a response, a detailed response on most of the points. I have not had a chance to read it. He spent most of, I think this afternoon, trying to get that done, which I appreciate very much. So I don't know what those responses are, but my point is I want to have all, as of the writing of this, I didn't know what the resolution to these items were, which is why I listed them. I either have a concern or I thought I heard a concern over the last three weeks. I want, my goal was let's get these in writing. And then ask fellow councilors, hey, if I got this wrong, get this off the list, right? Or if it's something you guys don't support and I'm bringing up, you know, I, I, I think Hambling should change his last name and you guys say, what are you talking about? No, we don't, we don't think that. Okay, so, fine, get it off the list. But let's give a list to this, to city administration and to Mr. Hambling of council concerns so they can just, next time we talk about this, we can be done. That's my goal. And so I think, you know, by putting in writing, I thought that would facilitate that. That's my purpose. And so my request is, can we refer this back to council or to committee? By which we primarily mean refer it back to city administration to trying to get through this list. And please, if any of you think something should come off the list or be modified, let's do that. So we've got a good list. And then let's get this done. Now, the only concern I have is that the first date we offered to the tribe to meet was the 25th, which is after our next meeting. They couldn't make the 25th and have suggested some alternate later dates, a few days later, but I'm just worried about the date. And let's get this meeting to happen. But, and then let's get through this list. So my point is rather than spend our time tonight going through this list, if we could just say, is there anything that ought not to be on this list or ought to be added to this or ought to be changed? So we have a good list, send it back to committee, by which we primarily mean ask administration to talk with applicant about this, and let's get this done.
We would be happy to go through the list because a lot of them have already been responded to because they're already in the development agreement and lease, your questions. So some have already taken care of in the development agreement lease. So should we go through that list this evening? So we know, and maybe have other ideas, what should be added? This, this actually was the purpose of the 31st when we met, and then this list did not come up. Conspur Benson.
I'd certainly love to do that. I thought the list that Councilman Mayhew set out was excellent. And it brought up a whole bunch of things that I didn't even think to, to add. He's a way better councilman than I am. But I haven't gotten a chance to read interim city administrator Chambles' responses to those or our city attorney's responses to those. And I would, I would love to go through that if, if time permits, because I, I really appreciated the list that Councilman Mayhew came up with.
Conspur Watton.
Yeah, I would agree with everybody in all the conversation, especially given the timing. I appreciate the fact that Councilmember Mayhew took the time and gave us a very detailed review of, of his concerns. And I also appreciate our interim city administrator for his responses back, which I haven't had the chance to read. And, and also Councilmember Mayhew of offering that email that we had privy to, to Mr. Hambling and giving him a couple of weeks to respond to that, I think is only appropriate. I would also go as far as to suggest that the city hire their own biologist to study the, the property and that we can have an independent report back, because I think that there's an underlying concern of the historical nature of the property. And I think it's in the best interest of the city, since it is city-owned property, to, to take that as part of the due diligence. So I would add that back to the consideration of the committee as well.
So biologist or anthropologist?
Anthropologist or archaeologist, one or the other, but not a biologist.
Okay. So, and the reason why I bring up the biologist is, is that there are a lot of lot of animals that are in the, in the ecosystem. And, and just so that we can get a a fair assessment. And, and if we want to involve other scientists, I would not be opposed to that as well.
Our interim city administrator, Chambliss.
Councilperson Walton, those, those studies take place a little further down the road in the, in the planning process. First, we need to know where we're going to disturb the soil. And that's the area that we clear. And, and the lot is much bigger than the area that's going to get disturbed. So until we really lock down that design, we have them all standing by already, ready to go. Task orders ready to be issued. We just need to narrow down that design before we can pull that trigger.
Yeah, wouldn't some sort of environmental impact study or report be required of some sort from the state? To make sure that we're not.
It's disturbed soil. It's a disturbed site.
Okay, so it's already been disturbed, so it wouldn't be required, but.
It's a gravel lot.
It's, it's in the report that we would do some sort of study.
We, we need to do anthropology. And, 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 yeah.
Okay, so. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
So I so I'm not sure we as council have had time to digest your responses. I, I'm not sure how long this meeting will go tonight. If we start going down each individual one versus let's take it back to committee and do that in committee, come back to here to say, here were the items, here was the disposition, and here's how we did or did not change the agreement. And don't take me, I'm, I just want it done right. I'm not trying to kill you by calendar myself. But, and in regards to this, brief history lesson, there were meetings with the tribe. There was a meeting with the tribe in which the tribe suggested not having the meeting, and it didn't occur. And then there was a public letter. So I think I agree with meetings. I would like that agreement on the tribe's side that we can have these discussions. But again, I don't want this to suffer death by calendar. So we got two weeks, three weeks. And we should have, happen. We need, we need the tribe's help to do, make that closure.
Okay, we currently have two motions on the table. We amended the original motion so to take the DA back to committee. So any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it's unanimous without Conspur Mayhew's vote. And the second, the original was regarding 4.4. I don't know, superseded.
The original motion was considering changes to 4.4 A, B, and C, but that is pretty well superseded by taking the whole thing back to committee.
So we have just agreed to take it back to committee. And, and so this would be on your agenda is to review each and every item at Parks and Public Works or Community Development. Where is it?
Community Development.
Community Development. Okay. And then we will bring it back to council, the next council meeting for, to vote on.
And.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
Think the onus is on us. Do a second read. If you have any questions, get it to the committee. Let's make this happen next time.
Okay, so I'll answer some of your questions to CD. That's actually next week. Any questions?
So get our questions out this week.
To the CD.
Conspur Johnson.
Yeah, just clarifying, asking questions of the CD committee probably wouldn't get you very far. Maybe the, the point was that CC, the creative, CDC, and direct questions to administration.
I actually, this is, this has been going through FNA. So I should probably go back to FNA committee. Right, but it should be FNA.
It's been a little bit confusing because it did kind of spend some time in both, but I do think that technically it was supposed to be on the FNA section. I think it is officially going through FNA.
So let's take it to FNA. So send me your, send myself and staff your questions before next meeting.
So how about cut off this Thursday? Because our agenda is going out Thursday. So if you have questions, please read the response. I think it should answer all your questions. And then if you have any further questions, also, we need the questions here. So send them to your city administrator Chambliss by Thursday.
Yeah.
Thank you. Right.
Mayor. I think the motion was technically to send the development agreement. We can refer the lease back as well, since it's, they're joined at the hip.
So you want a second motion? Motion, what he said.
Second.
So Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Conspur Mayhew to also include the lease review at FNA next meeting. Any discussion?
Sorry, Mayor, just want to be clear on your request because I want to support it. If if some of the questions that I have already raised and that sounds like have already been answered, if I have further sort of clarifying questions, are you asking those in writing in advance or can we just discuss that at the FNA meeting?
If you can send them in writing, because if there's any additional detail we need to get, we don't want to go there without answers.
Agree.
We, we want to go there with answers. And so if you have anything further, we need them by Thursday. If you don't send questions by Thursday, then
No guarantee.
No guarantee at all. Okay, thank you. All right. So, thank you this evening and thank you for your patience. And we will move on to the next agenda item. The Parks and Public Works Committee is AB 23-098 approving design-build contract with Abshire Construction for the community center expansion. Conspur Benson, would you please read the summary and motion?
This agenda bill seeks to adopt Resolution 1662 approving a design-build contract with Abshire Construction Incorporated to complete pre-construction and design services for the community center expansion project. This project will add approximately 24,000 square feet to the existing community center building, including a new swimming pool, expansion of the cardio center, improved locker rooms, and additional multi-use space. Move to adopt Resolution Number 1662 approving a design-build contract to Abshire Construction Incorporated and authorize the mayor to sign. Second.
Just moved by Conspur Benson, second by Conspur Johnson on approving the design-build contract. Is there any public comment regarding this item? So please raise your hand online or in council chambers. And I believe it's star nine to raise your hand. Right, seeing none. We've got council, is there any discussion? We have, actually I'll turn it over to interim city administrator Mike Chambliss and interim Parks and Public Works Director Jeff Hamlin this evening to answer any questions.
Good evening, again, council. We have assembled a cast of nine people tonight to be available to answer any question that we could anticipate you might have. So we have Jim Dugan and Doug Weiser from Parametrics here. They can answer questions regarding the design-build process if there's any of those still lingering out there. We have Ken Murray on, online from ALSC. They are the designer that was chosen to complete this design for the proposed expansion. We have Blaine Wolf with Abshire Contractor. He is the contractor that we selected to build this expansion. Jeff, myself, Dana are here from the city. Dana could speak to the outreach campaign. Jeff can speak to the technicalities of, of the contract along with city attorney. And I can be their plucky sidekick. And then we also have Josh Sutton of the YMCA here, who can speak to any issues or concerns with YMCA.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
So the ultimate goal of this is to get GMP or estimated price for this. At what date do we get, according to the contract, would we get that back?
The end of the year. I, I should have mentioned one other thing. There was a question raised to committee that we did get the answer for. We can use the grant money to pay for design.
And I want to confirm something else said in committee. And that is, once we get that GMP, maximum price, how long is that, I'll call it a quote, good for?
Then, it's, it's not a, you know, it's a dynamic. The building trades are dynamic, so we, we will have the council, normal council cycle to make that decision. But, but the decision needs to be made that to go or no go.
Okay, so it, it's small.
It's very tight.
Okay. So it rephrases the question for me tonight in that I'm okay with going to get a design. What you're really asking me is to lay a $2 million bet that we will close the funding required for this community center by the end of the year.
So, let's back that up just a little bit.
Okay.
So the number that is in the CIP was a guess by a, a, a firm that was working with the Y in 2017, I think is when we decided it was, 2018 initially, which we then updated with inflation. So another guess on, on that number. This contract is a design to a number contract. So it's our job to get that number together, and that is the project that will be coming to you. So it was mentioned in committee, what if it's $40 million? It's not going to be $40 million. It will be what we have to spend and what makes sense, or it will be nothing. If we can afford to meet the goals with the money we have, then I'm going to come before you and say, we can't do it. We don't have the money unless you, or we have these options. That's my job. That's my role as Public Works Director. It's not to come in here and say, wouldn't it be great to have a $28 million pool? I don't know how we're going to pay for it. That, that would be a big mistake on my part, and I would not be doing my job.
And I particularly did not, sorry. I'm responding. I didn't mention a dollar figure.
I understand.
Whatever dollar figure you pick, it's above what we got currently in the budget.
It's above what we currently have in fund balance. Currently, the number you have. Currently, the number in budget is 28 million. It is above the fund. Correct. I just.
Point of order, could we have that validated? That's not true. Budget. Meaning appropriation, known appropriated 28 million bucks.
You are correct.
We got that.
Okay, but.
In the CIP.
Again, I'm still laying a bet that in the next four months, we're going to close that, close that gap, whatever it is. Or the work done by this $1.8 million is invalid.
Well, four and a half.
Four and a half, wait. Well, right now for this particular one, it's 1.8, right?
So the design will have a shelf life. The, the, the design will have a shelf life as long as the code revisions are in effect. We are just now going through a code cycle. So code cycles approximately every four years. So the design will have a shelf life as long as the code does not change before additional major costs would be incurred in updating the design in, say, six years to move forward. It's, it's not.
So the engineering has some life.
Correct.
The associated cost of that engineering is, has no guarantee beyond that moment.
Correct.
Councillor Benson.
And what was the total number of, amount of grants that we have that could be applied to the $1.88 million design?
We've received a $1 million King County Parks Grant for the aquatics facility.
And that could be, that could be applied. So if.
That could be applied to the design.
So if this were to, if we were to determine that we couldn't go forward, we could offset a million dollars of that design using that grant.
Correct. The full mill, the full mill.
Councillor Johnson.
So it's an almost $900,000, $900,000 bet that we will have a project that will be affordable. You like those ones?
Councillor Christian.
So I share the concerns obviously about going forward without knowing exactly where the funds are coming from, right? I think that everyone can appreciate that. But at the same time, we have to think back to what our residents have been asking us for, for years. Even going out and knocking doors, like recently, like past two weeks, I constantly hear people wanting a pool. And the only way and a community center extension as well. And the only way we're ever going to be able to afford on that is if we actually take the step and move forward with the design without figuring out how much it's going to cost and how we're going to get there, what it's going to look like. We never will be able to make that same step and will be 10 years down the road, again, still wanting a pool. The one that's available right now out in Si View, I think is 84 years old. It was built when there was a community, I think the size was like 600 people, right? We know we built our community center when there were just a few houses up on the ridge. Everything is at capacity. And we have this great opportunity to invest in the families, in the communities, and things like being able to offer water safety is huge. If I remember correctly, I think that drowning may be like one of the top causes of death for kids going to four. And they give them swim lessons, I think it drops by like 88% in terms of the likelihood that they'll actually drown. So I understand hesitation, but when you also look at what we potentially have to gain, I think if we don't go forward and actually see what that would look like and what our options are, I think we're missing a huge opportunity here that could benefit a large portion of our residents from all the age demographics.
I will also state that Si View currently has at least 400 kids on the waitlist for taking swim lessons at any one point all the time. So it's not available out here. So. Councillor Mayhew.
So this topic is a very troubling one for me. I am a deep supporter. For those of you that don't remember, this, this community center was actually built when there was a lot more than a few houses here. And that location was required as part of the development agreement. Remember, we're talking about development agreements earlier tonight as part of the development agreement with the Ridge Developer Quadrant. And I apologize if I didn't, if I don't have the name, the correct name, they went through some name changes, but anyway, that entity. And that location was required for community center as part of that development agreement. And the developer was required to contribute an amount of money towards that community center. That wasn't enough to build the community center that was envisioned. Anyone who just pulls up Google Maps is immediately struck by the question, why is that building so small on that lot? It's just, it looks silly. Well, there's a reason. To get the rest of the money to build the facility that was envisioned, the city went to the voters. Not once, not twice, three times. Three times, the voter said yes, three times the voter said yes, but not by a large enough majority. You needed 60%, didn't get 60%. So we couldn't come up with the money. So the thing that was built there was based on the money that the developer put in primarily. Okay, so a majority of the residents at every question point has said, yeah, I want a big, bigger facility, I want a pool, but not by enough. Okay, why do I tell you that little history? Because we don't have the money. The exact same story. So we keep talking about, and I appreciate city, interim city administrators clarification. The CIP has a number in it, not the appropriation, which is what we're usually referring to when we say budget. So he's absolutely correct. But here's the point, our CIP guys, we didn't want to do the hard work last year. We passed a CIP that is massively unfunded. We knew it at the time. There's, the reason this whole topic's bittersweet to me is because after those three failed bond attempts, the current thing was built and that was the end of it. And for years it sat dormant. And I was in the meeting when we revived this. I went to the mayor, then mayor, and when I was a new council member and said, I've looked at all the math here and we have a whole bunch of fund balance. Eight million bucks. What's the plan? And there was no plan. What had happened is the city, the city council had said, we're not going to build a city on a one-time revenue. We're not going to build city services on one-time revenue. So the construction sales tax during the build out of the ridge, the city council didn't allow the administration to spend that on operations. But they also didn't specify what it should be spent on. It just grew. Okay, so nowadays, so now we have, I don't know. Let's say 10-ish million. That's what we got. Not 30, not 28, 10-ish. So where are we going to get the rest of the money? Now, maybe it's a bit north. My numbers are maybe a couple of years old. But we don't have 28 million, we don't have anywhere near 28 million. So where are we going to get the money? So here's my point. The entire incoming, let me say it a different way. The entire incoming money to our capital funds every year is under 2 million, from which we fund parks replacements, street replacements, repair of our streets, repair of our sidewalks, a slew of things and capital projects. So 2 million bucks is a massive amount of money to this city. $1 million is a massive, it takes forever. Our parks and public works maintain a repair budget every year. So the amount we spend on repairing our parks is only 350,000 a year. A million bucks is a massive amount of money to us. We don't have that kind of money. So my point is we cannot spend our money on a project we don't have funding for. We just can't do it. Now, we in December voted to authorize, I want to say somewhere between 750,000 and a million bucks, this council did, to take the first step on a design build process. The understanding was, we would get, my understanding was, and I may have misunderstood, was we would get back a design as a result. And that we would then know, what's this going to cost? What are we trying to sell? Can we go to the public on this? Can we figure out if the public wants us to fund this, if they're going to be willing to pay for it? And we can talk about, do you do a council manic bond or do you go do a, you know, we could talk about funding, but still, you know, we need to figure out how we're going to pay for this. So here we are, and we still don't have that. And now we need to spend another 2 million to get that. 3 million bucks just to find out. And there hasn't been a single meeting that I'm aware of this council, not one single meeting that I'm aware of this council meeting talking about, what are our priorities for this project? How many lanes? What size pool? There's been, I think, an advisory committee, you know, but nothing involving, we were elected to do this. So where's our meetings? Where are the priorities? Where are the design options? How do we control what this total thing is going to cost? And then the last thing I just want to say on this is it is not, I appreciate Public Works Director's comments, but I will just say it is not his job to find the funding for this. Now, he didn't say that. I'm sort of misquoting him. He says it's his job to make sure he, you know, he can cover the cost, but it's our job to find the money. The eight elected people sitting up here, seven plus Mr. Watt on the phone. It's our job to find that money. I'll tell you, that parkway, our staff didn't find the funding for that parkway. The elected officials of this city went and found that money. They didn't apply for a grant. It wasn't a grant. It was a state appropriation. Our public were, our public announcements are wrong on that. It was an appropriation. That was done by the eight elected people in this city over a period of about two and a half years. So it's our job to go find this money. We have to support the mayor on this. We have to help her. We have to do, we have to go get this money. It's not Mr. Chambliss's job. But it is a huge hole and I do not believe that we can possibly spend this kind of money until we have funding in place and we know what project we're going for. And we've talked about alternatives and we're all, at least the majority of us bought in. So that's my point of view. I hope so.
So I will state that we do have 15 million budgeted for this, not 750,000, or we have 15 million.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for clarification, although it's unfunded. We don't have the funds for it. We don't have the cash. We don't have the source.
You appropriated it.
Your budget source.
Yes, we do. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
Okay, well, change the question one more time. I agree. $1.8 million, basically on a bet that we close the hole. We're not going to do it by the end of the year. If I'm a bet, if I'm an odds person, we're not going to do it. Backing off from that, though, am I willing to put forward $900,000 to get a design? And at least a current, at this stage, estimate on cost. And I'm kind of leaning, yeah, we're going to spend that. If this proceeds any further, we're going to spend that money for design sometime or another. So the county helps me take a bite out of it. Somebody may argue I'm just spinning out somebody else's tax money, but I have that argument with myself late at night. But I can reluctantly go forward to get that design and know a better price. For right now, it's all pie in the sky. It's a guesstimate on a guesstimate on a guesstimate. What's your response to that?
So we have Councillor Watt and Councillor Benson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Okay, a couple of things that come to mind. First of all, as clarification goes back to Mayor Pro Tim Holloway's assertion that we do have funds coming from King County. But there's also another factor in this, if I recall, and that is there is a need for Si View to close their deal on their pool through the next general election in November. And if they don't, they will lose funding from King County and potentially we could go after that funding as well, if my understanding is correct. And then the other factor, and it may be part of that $15 million, is that we have a bond that is being retired. So we will no longer be collecting on that current bond. So then we can dedicate that money towards the pool. So just, you know, clarification and if I'm not right, I'd like to hear from the finance department or the administration just so that I have clarity on it as well.
Budget Manager Drew Bute.
Thank you very much for everyone's questions. To start off with that bond, that was the fire station bond. It was paid for with an excess levy. Basically, property tax excess levy, that excess levy has left, right, for the most part. So in essence, this past year, the voters of the city actually saw a reduction in the levy rate as a consequence of that $250,000 going away. In terms of the $15 million, we did basically incorporate that into the CIP. That $15 million was tied to two sources, the real estate excise tax that we had collected so far. In addition, the non-recurring sales tax that we have also collected so far. We took that entire bucket of money and basically appropriated it for this by any. There is the additional $13 million that we labeled under other sources that we anticipated going after in terms of grants and other sources of funding that would ideally be collected, especially by the time the 25 and 26 bionic came around. So in essence, this project was broken up into two separate, I don't want calm segments, but it was basically allocated between the bionics. The cash that we currently had so far, and we currently have a $24 million cash balance within our non-unities CIP. Now, some of that is transportation revenues, but the majority of that is REIT funds as well as non-recurring sales tax. That $15 million was allocated to this bionic. The $13 million that we need to collect in order to reach that $28 million was anticipated to be coming into the door over the next bionic. So I'm not sure if that provides any sort of clarity, but that's the understanding from the CIP that we had shown council last summer. Thank you.
I just have a clarifying question, Mayor.
Okay.
Just to make sure I understood what you said. I have two questions to you gave to answer. With regard to the, just to make sure that we've, that everyone's understood the answer you gave, which I think was directed to Councilman Watson's question. For the levy for the fire station that went away, that was a voter-approved increase for a specified time and a specified purpose. Only the voters could reauthorize or extend is the wrong word, but only the voters could do. The council cannot extend that increase. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay, so that's gone. It's not sort of there to be reused.
We'd have to go out for another.
We could make that case to the, yeah, or that case could be made to the voters.
It could be.
But we can, okay, just want to make sure everyone's clear on that and then that I was clear on that. And then the second thing I just want to be clear on, because I think I was confused a little, a few minutes ago. So the, you're saying that there of the, in the biennial capital budget that's currently in place for 2324, that for all expenditures on that budget, there is dedicated funding matched to those expenditures?
Yes, we currently have sufficient cash on hand that has been dedicated that we've collected up to date to get to that $15 million, basically, price tag for the bionic.
All right. And just to make sure I understand the answer, when we look out at the CIP, so beyond the bionic, none of that 15 sort of is also, say earmarked or thought of or assigned to, you know, other projects. It's like, no, that's, those other projects have their own funding sources. The 15 is here for the 15.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Those other projects are also potentially funded by grant funds that we anticipated to collect, but also other additional sources of capital revenues that we anticipate collecting over the six-year period.
Got it. So 15 total project, 28, the delta was, is yet to be solved.
Yes, we have to solve the delta.
Councillor Benson, do you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, a few points that just stick out to me is one that saying yes three times with not enough votes is also known as saying no. And, you know, we look at things all the time, vital things all the time that we have to pay for, and we say, we don't have the money for this. We don't have the money to cover this. And it's, it's hard for me to, to, to make that leap to say, we need this swimming pool more than we need those other things that were. And, and I, and I wonder, I can see Snakwame voting for a levy for a fire station and, and paying for that levy over, over many years. But to say, hey, let's, let's keep on paying that same amount for, for the swimming pool. And I'm not trying to diminish the importance of the swimming pool. I think, I think it would be, I think it would be incredible for our community, but it's the kind of thing where if you say to citizens, would you like a swimming pool? All of them are going All of them are going to say yes. All of them are going to say yes. It's, you know, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they want to give up the other things that they have to give up. You know, by the way, we won't be able to afford to fill it with water. You know, it's, I, so I, 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 I was excited about this project when, when Mr. Bute was talking about it during our CIP discussions, because he was talking about alternative ways to, to find funding for that. And if we can find grants and, and state appropriations and, and those sorts of things to cover it, that's wonderful. But, but if we're looking at, if we're looking at a bond measure or a council manic bond, that's a hard pass by me, because the citizens of Snkwami have already been clear on, on that. So, so yeah, the question becomes, do we want to, do we want to roll the dice with 900 grand to get a plan? So that we can look and, and see exactly how much this is going to cost? And find out if, over the, the ensuing biennium, we're going to be able to come up with that, that other 13 million.
One second. Here, I'm sending turn to the minister.
So, Councilperson Mahu, you asked when your meetings are to decide on what features and, and costs. Those are coming, but we need to have a contract in place and, and have the data to present to you to say, okay, if the pool looks like this, it's going to be this amount. If we take out this pool, it drops to this amount. And, and that is coming, but we have to take this step to get there. And, and Councilperson Holloway, to, to use your reference of the hole, we don't know how big the hole is. So I don't know how to fill it. It's more than the dirt you have.
I don't know that. I, I'm working off a guess, off a guess, off a guess that we applied some funky math to, to come up with a number. And, and that's not real data. I, I mean, you know, I have a science background. I, I, I want to get that hard number. It's also really hard to negotiate with the why, because we don't know what we need to negotiate. There's, there, that part of it is going to take place after the next few months. During the next few months. So we will have that answer for you too, when we come back for your second go-no-go.
So I just want to add, a lot of granting agencies want to be like the funder, the last funder, right, towards a project. So there is some value in having something shovel-ready that others are contributing to, that Sydney's probably still prepared to put since getting in the game, for example, with the 15 million dollars that we're right now having the bank that we could dedicate towards this project. So I just want to make sure that we understand that there is value in having something shovel-ready, that having something that we're committed to, that the granting agencies and see the YMCA can see that the cities confirmed, right, that we're proceeding with a design for the most part. And that will provide us with some momentum for the most part, when we are seeking those funds from other agencies and from other jurisdictions that may want to participate with us. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is true when I spoke with the legislature legislators this last session. They want to be the last dollar in. So 2025 looks promising for us, for legislators. Then I'll talk about that later, because we need, we're going to set up a meeting with them. But they're not going to give it to us this past year, because we're still going through the design phase and costing phase. So. Council Johnson.
Yeah, I really appreciate the idea of having alternatives that are at different scales. You know, maybe we can't do two tanks. Maybe that's just not something that can happen. I don't know. Maybe we can. But it'd be great to have the options on the table. Maybe this dollar finger, finger, figure appropriated or budgeted. Maybe that does get us a pool. Maybe it's not what everyone really wanted, but we have the dollars to do that. Maybe it doesn't. I don't know. Nobody knows. Here's what has swayed me as a significant change from going into this meeting was that the grant funds can go toward this, that this is not almost $2 million, it's less than 1 million. And that, to me, has pushed me just over the edge of saying, okay, I think that's worth doing. And here's the main reason why. If we basically look at this and we go, okay, everything's that they're coming up with, no matter how many bells and whistles we take off, it's $30 million. We will never get the money for that. And now we've spent $900,000 to get to the final answer is no. There will never be a pool at the Y. I don't know if that's the case, but am I willing to bet $900 that there's a solution that gets a functional pool where kids can learn how to swim in a place that has a fast-running river with a waterfall nearby? Yeah. I think that I'm willing to take the bet because of that one thing. It drops the, the dollar amount enough to get me there.
So, Councilman Rayho.
So maybe someone could help me with some of the numbers here, so I could try and understand. The thing that I read that's in front of us tonight is not a contract for a design. It's far, far more than that. And there's no way I'm voting for that right now. It's not happening. But to the point that I thought I heard discussed is, hey, what we need to do is get to design. And I thought I, I heard some questions I didn't understand, so I wasn't at the FNAK or the Parks and Public Works Committee that seemed to imply some smaller number than 2 million might get us to a design. Maybe I misunderstood what I heard, but here's, here's my question is, what does it take to get us to a design, sorry, design options such as what we're just discussed by Councilmember Johnson? And what happened to the almost 750 to a million bucks we already gave towards this late last year? Is that, what, what happened to that money? And so what, you know, if, if the idea is, what's, I guess I'm focusing on the idea of what's the minimum amount that will get us to these options? And, and what I think Councilmember Johnson was just, maybe I can get on board with that. Frankly, I don't think so, but I'm willing to look at that. If, I'm, 2 millions is too much. There's flat out no way that I'm, that I'm voting for that. It's too big a number for our city.
Can we get clarification from either City Attorney or maybe Mr. Hamlin? Because it seems like there's different stop points in this agreement. They, maybe you are signing for the overall agreement, but yet you only go so far when you, you vote for the 1.8 million and then you have the option to get out of it or not.
So what, what you're voting on is only what's in the scope. So this Exhibit C, which is included in the Agenda Bill. And that is only for the design phase of this. Now, a couple, I want to clarify a couple of things, because I feel like maybe we're, we haven't been very clear about what we're doing here. So the design process is not, we're not just going to kick out a design and say, here's the cost, right? That's not what we're trying to do here. It's progressive design build, so it has this progression to it. So we're in, we would like to start what's called the programming phase. So we're going to program the facility. That includes things like, what size does this need to be based on the, the projected volume of people that are going to use it? What sort of activities do we want? What kind of revenue can it generate? I mean, there's a whole bunch of things that go into this, into basically laying out the features which we can design into the facility. Based on that, then we would move forward into this design phase. And the design phase will include basically this size of space for this feature and how much the cost is for that feature. Right? So what we're not, we're not developing a cost. We're developing costs and ranges of costs for you to consider. And we're trying to hit a moving target, because we don't really know exactly how much money we have yet. But we want to get to a point where we have a range of options preferably that we can pay for. But if there's a gap, then the decision will be yours to make as to whether or not you want to go out and maybe wait a little bit to get more funding or, you know, or the legislative side to see if we can find some more funding that way. But it gets us close. Well, it could get us all the way there. I mean, it, it really, we could bring you a design with the money that we have. And you could decide on that, but you may say, oh, well, I'd sure really like to have, you know, expanded, you know, facilities for kids, for children. And, and you know, there's, there's a lot of features that we will bring to you for you to consider with the ranges of costs. And those will be in the form of a guaranteed maximum price based on the market conditions which exist now. So you will have those decisions to make. We can scale back and go with something that we can pay for now. Or we can, you know, look for options to provide the funding. Or either way, we'll give you a range of decisions to make moving forward, and it'll get us close to where we need to be. And for $900,000. I don't see that as being a really unreasonable price for considering what it is that we're building.
So just to clarify, are we tonight just being asked to vote on a nine, what is the figure we're being asked to vote on?
So it's 1.88 with sales tax.
1.88.
And then I believe we can cover the, the million dollars from the grant that we have received, we can use towards the design. So we're really talking about $900,000.
Is there a match requirement on the grant?
No, I don't believe so.
So we will also state that we are working with other groups and funding. So we have the Y as a partner. We're working with them. We're hoping to continue working with the school district. We'll see what happens there. Our legislators and, and then just other types of funding that we can apply for. So we continue to work towards that. But we also need to know, you know, how much is it going to cost if we decide pool or expansion community centers? So there could be different segments too that we can do. So, Council Johnson.
Yeah, I honestly haven't been in any of the discussions with the school districts. I don't know what has exactly happened in them. But just, I would wonder if we said, well, we would like some help with this and we could have some features for it. And they say, okay, is that going to be $2 million? Is it 500,000? Is it $10 million? And we just go, we don't know. Then that's not a very impressive, I would, I would wonder if that is an impressive presentation to the Snkwami Valley School District or if something like, if you put in this much, we can get this feature for the swim team. If you don't, then we don't get that feature for the swim team. But we can be a lot more specific than just, something would help. Can you agree to help some? That's just a guess.
Mayor Pro Tim Halliway.
One, we, the, in times gone by, we did have discussions with the, with the school district on that of, with your help, we can add more lanes or whatever. So, but it, it needs to continue. It's times have gone by. I guess, two points. One, I'd be very reluctant to raid, to raid general fund to throw money at the pool, because guys, general fund's not healthy. Okay? So let's not go down that path. Two, is a splash pad in the 15 million dollars, Drew, or is that a separate?
That is a separate item. That was incorporated into the CIP. Yeah, for 1.5 million dollars with basically money that the city has built into our CIP to fund.
So are we rating the general fund? This is not the general fund. Is it capital?
No, it's not the general fund. Council did approve a 2.5 million dollar transfer from the general fund, because we had cash greater than our reserve target within the general fund, basically. And we have dedicated that towards capital, because cash is considered a one-time use overall. And that's, we have that going to the capital fund.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Mahu.
So this topic was well on its way prior to COVID. We had discussions, quite a few discussions with the school district. We didn't have to spend 2 million bucks to get rough ballpark figures to talk with them. And they had identified funding that could be used. That funding's gone. That, think, different things happened in the intervening time. But a million bucks to the school district is an awfully big number. And why do I say a million? Just because it's a round number? We, you know, the sort of number we were talking about to build out to the facility that they would need was, was a bigger number than that. But where would they get that money? So that, that's a big decision, you know, that's a big commitment for them to make. But it's a significant issue, so that, you know, for their students, being able to swim and especially some of the younger kids, when you sort of hit that, you know, swimming, teaching age. But we didn't have to spend 2 million bucks to have conversations, because the school district doesn't need to know the bill is, you know, They need to know it's about 500 bucks. That's all they need to know. Eventually, they'll need to know. But so we're talking about a monstrous amount of money that takes our entire REIT collections in a year is less than 2, $2 million. And it just, this is, this kind of number to Snkwami is a massive number. If, if we're telling ourselves, wow, we're just kicking some money in. What happened to the million, 750 to a million bucks we just approved last fall? Where did, what happened to that? Why don't we have plans yet? It's just money after money after money. And these are massive sums, massive sums. It takes years and years and years for us to build up that kind of money. And it takes one minute to spend it. You don't think that those councils over the last 20 years wanted to spend that money on this, that, or the other? They did. So we should think long and hard. Don't take this decision lightly. Please, don't take this decision lightly. It's a massive amount of money.
So we're confirming those numbers. I thought at one point we just approved like $35,000 or something.
Yeah, yeah. We've spent to date, we've spent $51,000. And we have encumbered outstanding contract value of $120,000. That's just contract value that hasn't been spent yet. The outstanding contract value depended upon further council, $645,000 is, I'm, what we're trying to chase down right now. So I can't, I can't really answer that. I don't know what the answer to that is. I will say in response to one thing that you said that I thought. So what we're not doing, we're not doing this the traditional way. We're not coming up with rough numbers, right? So progressive design build, we do have parametrics here. We can talk a little bit more about the process of progressive design build. This is really kind of a, more of a firm commitment to building a project, right? So when we spend this money, what we are, what we're buying is a full design. You know, shelf-ready, you know, if we need to put on the shelf. But, you know, we're moving forward with the building essentially of this community center. But we're taking it up to this point. So it, it is more of a firm commitment than we would normally do when you're just trying to raise funds. So it is, it's a different process. But it gets it done quicker and it generally gets it done with a little bit less expense, especially in a period of high inflation. So that, yes, I'm sorry.
No, Councilperson Washington.
Thank you for being here this evening. What did the $51,000 include?
The $51,000 is for a contract with Parametrics to help us through the design build process. So progressive design build is a unique process and it's somewhat involved. It requires a lot of contractual negotiation and a lot of activity with contracts. So we had to get approval before we could even do progressive design build. Parametrics, that is their expertise in progressive design build. And they helped us through the process and helped us with the contracting. And then we also have another, I think, with a law firm to help us with the contract, who we've been using. Which is what you see as part of, I think, Exhibit B. Yep.
Thank you.
So in essence, council has seen $645,000 in other outstanding contract values as part of their overall table. There is an Agenda Bill, and in essence, the Finance Department may have been conservative when it comes to this. But this is the contract with Parametrics regarding Agenda Bill 22-138 Community Center Expansion Project Alternative Public Works Contracting Options. We can see within the analysis section, the proposed agreement of consultant services with Parametrics provides for consultant services to assist the city obtaining PR provides for consultant services to assist the city obtaining PRC approval for the use of progressive design, build, alternative public works, construction method. And also states that the proposed agreement also includes the scope of work and cost for the consultant to serve as the owner's representative throughout the design build process, including design, pre-construction guarantee, maximum price negotiation. Permitting bidding and construction, the proposed agreement indicates that these subsequent tasks may be authorized by a notice to proceed. Issued only following additional future city council approval. So in essence, we may have overstated the case here regarding the six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, but we consider one full contract in essence, but there is a breakpoint in there for council to authorize that additional spending. So hopefully that clarifies that.
So we have spent fifty-one thousand.
Yes.
And so now we're asking for the one point eight million for the design. Feature. So we have not spent the six hundred and forty-five thousand. That comes with additional approval down the road.
And that may require, yes, additional approval down the road from council.
Just one more time.
So it's not one point eight million plus seven hundred and fifty thousand. It is.
That is agenda bill twenty-two dash one three eight. Sorry, mayor.
Right. One point eight million plus fifty-one thousand. So is there anyone else having any comments? I see, I see, Council Mayhew has his hand up and let's give others a chance.
Point of order, Mayor. I'm requesting to speak.
I know you had the floor quite a few, quite a bit. I'm just curious if anyone else.
Nothing that stops me from.
Ron Robin.
Point of order. There's nothing that, that, that council rules or procedure specifically allow a council member wishing to speak to do so and for you to call on them. There's no other council member raising their hand right now.
Does anyone else?
Peel the decision of the mayor to the full council.
I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear councilman. Agreed.
Okay, Council Mayhew?
Is there a way to find? So I think the goal we're trying to get to here is find the cost of various options. I'm a little troubled by what I hear. So I'm not clear if we're actually getting options or or what, or how the councils involve those, but we can work out the details. Is there a way to take the six hundred and forty-five already authorized but currently unspent? Take the amount of the grant that we have. Repurpose the six hundred thousand, use the million dollar grant and limit the budget to that amount. We've already authorized that six hundred thousand. So the only new money we'd authorize now is the amount of the grant. So we're not committing out of our money that has been built up over twenty years. Beyond what we've already said. Is there a way that we could get to a design for that one point six is what I suspect that number is? And then if we ever go, we'll find a way to refund the rest of the parameters contract and so on. Is there a way to do that? Maybe that's a compromise we could all find.
I mean, you're actually, you're asking us to negotiate right now a contract which has already been negotiated between the staff and parametrics. We give them marching orders. When we approve the the design, design build concept. So what's on the table right now is one point eight million. We do have a grant for the one million. We've only spent fifty-one thousand. So we're asking for the total one point eight million and eight million or eight hundred thousand would come out of our general fund, which we have already appropriated fifteen million for. Council Benson?
Okay, simplify the question then. Could, could that six hundred and forty-five thousand already appropriate go toward this project as well?
So that's six hundred and forty-five thousand doesn't trigger until after the design.
And there's no way for us to, to, as a council, repurpose that for, uh, for this function?
Oh, so we won't be spending that money unless we actually issue a notice to proceed, basically. So.
Part of the fifteen million, right?
Yes.
In essence, part of the fifteen million. So I, guys, you're spending part of that fifteen million. How you want to characterize how you're spending it? You're spending part of that fifteen million dollars. What's before you is to spend a million dollars from the county and eight hundred thousand for that fifteen million dollars to get you options and prices on those options. For us to discuss and for administration to go out and talk to partners about, hey, what do we think we can do collectively?
Council Vincent?
So if I'm understanding your explanation, you're saying that six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars isn't going to get spent on this if we end up not approving the one point eighty-eight or one point eight million to get this done. If we, if we, if we were to go ahead and get the design and then we decided, no, this, we can't do this. We're not spending that six hundred and forty-five thousand anyway. So it doesn't, it's, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other.
Well, correct. If we. Can I?
That's correct.
Yeah, if.
That makes sense.
I don't think we proposed this, but if we were to kill this project tonight, that's six hundred and forty.
Still.
Would not be spent.
Alright.
Okay, uh, knowing us, I, we may decide to go have further discussions and not do something tonight, but do something later. So, uh, but again, it all comes out of the same fifteen million dollars.
Council Johnson?
So I think that what I understood, Councilmember Mayhew, to be asking about, and you can correct me if I got it wrong, was, can we essentially do a little, get what we need for a lot less money? Do we need all the work that's being asked uh, in, uh, in the contract that's before us tonight? Or can we say, we really don't need all of the things that are involved here? Is there some smaller amount that only costs a million dollars? We could ask to be done. Is, is that what you're asking?
Council Mayhew?
Yeah, I, I'm saying let's just buy a design options contract, preliminary design options, rough pricing, that's it. It doesn't cost one point eight million to get that, folks. It just doesn't. We've loaded this thing up too complex because we're on a path which we may end up on, but I move, we return this to committee and ask the committee to work with administration to find the minimum price to get the preliminary rough design options and get that as a contract to bring back to us.
Seconded.
By Council Mayhew, second by Council Benson to return to committee to
to, uh, find out the minimum price necessary to get just a preliminary design options estimation and design, preliminary design.
So let's hear from Mayor and City Administrator.
So a couple of things. To get the GMP guaranteed maximum price, which is the number we need, that is the price that's been negotiated already. I would, I would throw this actually to parametrics because we don't have our design build council here present tonight. But this has been approved by the state that we are on the path of design build. And what, but, but you're suggesting, and I, I, it kind of suggests to me that we're getting off of that path. And I don't know if there's alligators on the side of the path. And I think there are.
I modify my proposal, man.
Black.
Motion.
There, there's a motion on here. So let's, we have the parameters.
Yes, Jim Dugan.
Point of order. I think that, uh, council can make an amendment to their motion whenever they want to. I don't see why a council member wouldn't be allowed to do that.
Well, you've had this motion. You wanted to hear from the experts when you had the experts on it.
I just like to amend my motion. It was a bad motion.
Okay, what is your motion?
To return it to count to committee to explore lower cost options to get to a design. Sure. The committee, let committee work out the details of what that might look like, if anything.
Well, we already had a, a second on it. So the person that's second and half.
I'll withdraw my second.
The second.
Will you second the revised motion?
Play in a second.
Okay, second.
So it has been modified by Council Mayhew, second by Council Benson to return to committee to explore lower cost design options. So let's hear from parametrics. We also have, um, our Jeff Hamlin.
I knew it would come around to me eventually.
He touched on a lot of categories. I'll take a step back for a moment to just refresh when we talk about design. So there's concept work, schematic design, design development, construction documents. That represents the full spectrum of design. We have some concept work already done, which is about massing, size and shapes. We saw the pictures of what was orange, I believe, existing blue, potential blue, how that would look. That's part of that concept work. Concept work has been done without the benefit of programming. How many lanes? How many offices? How many janitors closets? Where does the front door sit? Where do you put your transformer? Where does your HVAC unit go? All of those kinds of things and the programs that would be inside, all of that is yet to come. The one point eight eight million was designed around getting you to the end of design development. So through schematic, which you're not in, through design development, to get to a spot where you had a high degree of competence in design and program of the facility so that you could determine. And in that moment, what would be the cost to actually build what's being conceived? First, can you fund the balance? Ways that we do that. And third, whether you could or couldn't, if you couldn't, everything stopped as a matter of fact. And if you could, then it would be the plan that you put in place to fund grants, donors, to be a variety. You can actually stop well short of that GMP guaranteed maximum price moment of the end of DD to come up with as many ideas as you can on a design that has been less forward. It just has a higher degree of inaccuracy when it comes to cost. That's and program. You could stop in the middle of schematic design. I'm going to make bold numbers. It stopped in the middle of SD schematic design, spend eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars for here and twenty-three cents. Of what it is that you've learned, what you don't know, a range of what you think the final cost might could be, which will be a fairly wide range because design hasn't been forwarded far enough along. So it's just simply a matter of levels of assurances on, on where you want to start. If you said, if you looked up at the design bill team and said, we're going to authorize a million dollars for you to go as far as you can. Come back to us with as much as you can do, with as many options as you can find and with as many ranges as you can. Your design building, which you just had. It would be like telling you, the cost of a vehicle will be somewhere between thirty-two thousand and sixty-two thousand. It was schematic, but at the end of DD, it might be between forty-one thousand and forty-three thousand. It's just the compressing design and trying to find out where, what are you going to need? What you need to build, what you want, when you want it built. The answer is yes, you can do.
Can I ask clarifying question there?
Council Mayhew?
Um, so we could, let me see if I understand correctly. We could stay on the path we're on. I'm calling, thinking of it as the design build path. Is that okay? We could stay on that path, right? Tonight, we, we're considering, hey, let's go from point A to point E. We could say, you know what? We actually want to only go as far as point D or C. And you, fine, you can do that. We're on the path. It's just, you're only going to get a D level of answer. So you're not going to get the E level of answer, but you know, if the D level of answer, you know, serves a purpose that then allows you to get comfortable with going on forward to E. That's a thing we could choose to do.
Statutorily, it's well within your rights. Your position has all that.
So our committee could have further discussion of the exact details of what that might look like, whether it's a dollar or or stage, but this is a discussion they could have with you.
It is. And the design build team that you've chosen, Appshire and ALSC, they're routinely faced with. That's my budget. Maybe everything I can get. How much of my program can I get for that budget? It's the same thing as saying. You've got a million, two fifty, three sixteen. I want you to go as far in design as you can with as many options as you think makes sense. So that we, council, can come up with a level of assurance and confidence about taking the next step.
Thank you.
You can.
Thanks, man.
Reproton Hallaway?
So, but what's on the table right now is one point eight million dollars to get us to detailed design options and pricing.
It's right near the end of DD, which would give you a DD cost estimate, which historically for the design builder becomes the number for the project that they would finish the design permit and build your project.
But we will have discussions in the meantime of what those options are, which ones we want, which ones we don't want, uh, moving forward.
From the time, the answer is yes. By the time your design builder starts, as with any project, you as the owner work with the design build team up through that GMP moment with all the discussions and decisions around what the project still.
So my point being, GMP is E. We will have those conversations of A, B, C, and D and do have opportunities to say, stop at those opportunities. At least I, I know what I'm, if I say a buck two twenty, I'm not sure what I get for a buck two twenty. I know what I get for one point eight million. It's going to get me deep ninety percent detailed design. Correct me if the percentage is wrong.
It's not quite right, but it's end of design development with work instruction documents, which is the place to set the GMP.
And I get the GMP. So it sets us on a path to a GMP. And it gets us a design.
Council Johnson?
So if we only spend a million dollars, it doesn't get us to that final, um, GMP.
Guaranteed maximum price.
GMP, right? Um, so if we don't do the amount that's been asked here, we don't get to that answer. And it could be that after, uh, spending say a million, that, uh, if we decide to keep going, that uh, now to get to the GMP, it could be a much higher number.
It's always possible. Not likely.
Alright.
Not likely.
Well, it depends when you do it, right? If you, right. Make sure it may be different.
One of the probably the single greatest reason for you to approve design building specifically progressive design build is because very thin that you're facing. What you want, you can't afford. You've got to raise money for it and you need a builder to give you all the options, be able to tell you, what does it look like? Where does it sit? How much does it cost? All along the way at the end of SD, that's a moment in time where that same thing happens at the end of DD. And that one point eight million along the way. As is the same with our country. And we stopped and started like a boss. So if you're, there's a great degree of confidence that the end result of getting to a GMP is going to give you something that you have, you can hold the design. Check the marketplace. You will know better about your grants and funding sources. I'll tell you a little more about the market in a moment. What it is, imagine, um, kind of like the cyclones top. It's just noisy as hell. But by the time you get down to the bottom where you actually have a GMP, it's just as tight and as quiet as it can be. You're just reducing variables while you drive a design to a price. And that's what design build does as opposed to. And your ability to trust your design builder and the advice that they give you is key to that. My own recommendation. My own recommendation is begin to know more before you kill it. Don't know yet enough to know what is the it, but you will know that as you authorize moving forward to that GMP level, weekly progress meetings, monthly updates, it's just a board agenda items, the progression of design will get to the end of schematic design. And if it isn't in their contract, it's easily amended to have them do a schematic design level cost estimate of where they are and what that range costs of. It's a very normal thing to do. of where they are and what that range costs of. It's a very normal thing to do. Tends to be a much wider swath, it could be five to 10% number, you get the end of DD, not design bill, it usually is three to five percent. You get up to ninety percent set, and you're about, you're almost at a hundred. But in design bill, that flips, when you get to your DD level in your GMP, should you, should you then authorize that? They go into phase two services, which is finished design, permit, and building for that number. Unless there's something wrong with your dirt, or you intentionally add scope of work, or one of the items called out in force measure in their contract, their job is to dial the design into that number all the way down to the date. In the last three and a half or four years, just with one public agency we had, we're on our eighteenth progressive design build project. Out of the eighteen projects, we have zero change orders for new money. Zero. Seventeen requests for information that were confirmed. Actually, we're bills to team. So I have complete confidence there, at least with the team and with your team. If you were to authorize this subject to, maybe it's a monthly approval as we go, but we carry on, just as we carry on. To get to a spot where you either collectively agree, this game is over, everyone needs to go home. Or we're doing okay, let's keep going up to that GMP mark. You'll see it all along.
Councillor Martin, thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize if, because I'm having a difficult time hearing from the podium. So if I'm repeating what has already been said, please, please understand that. Here's my concern. This is a, right now, a 28 million dollar project, a delay of six months because we're going back, we're piecemealing it at five percent inflation, and it could be much greater than that on construction costs. We're talking about 1.4 million, and we oftentimes hear about public projects that get started, and then they realize that they're significantly under budgeted, and that's what we're avoiding here, that's what we're attempting to avoid here. We're attempting to get to the build phase faster with more accurate numbers. And for that, I am comfortable with moving forward, and we did talk about this back last November or so. So this is not a new concept, and for me, I'm in, and I'm, I'm against sending it back to committee.
Councillor Benson.
I really appreciate you being here tonight. I, I think you're an excellent explainer, and I, I really appreciated your explanation. My question is actually for legal and, and interim city administrator Chambliss. If we were to go forward with the, with the design or the design process, and we got a million dollars into it, and it was clear to us at that point, um, either that this, that this project was going to be too expensive for us to consider going forward, or that we weren't going to be able to get nearly the, the services and, and features that we needed in order to make it worthwhile. Um, would those, would those grant monies be able to be used for that million dollars? Or are they encumbered with us completing this process, this 1.88 million dollar process?
We confirmed that it could be used for design. Once again, we still don't have the document in hand, so I cannot talk to all the fine print.
Okay, so council, we have a motion on the table, which was return to committee to explore lower cost design options. So are we ready to vote on Councillor Johnson?
I have a question on that. I thought that what I'd heard from, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Was that we might need to, to make an amendment of some sort or changes in some way such that we could have some stops along the way? Did I hear that correctly, or, or is that already in place as it is with, with the 1.8 million? Yes.
I don't know what the exact proposed contract language is in the design builder's contract. It is a very easy thing to hide in or to amend, or whatever it is that you want for looking at what you want to see through phase one preliminary design services. It's something that we can easily help your staff make sure that it's.
With that, then, sorry, if I can amend.
Yes.
Move to amend the motion to be to refer back to committee to explore lower or other progressive funding options.
Second.
This has been moved by Councillor Johnson, second by Councillor Mayhew. So we already had to explore lower cost design options.
Okay, I guess I'm adding then, or progressive approvals? Yeah, progressive approvals. That makes sense.
What, what will committee do?
So what we would be doing is exploring the idea of making sure that we don't have to, we are not committed to the one point. It really is very close to 1.9 million. The, the 1.9 million just right out of the gate, but that there could be stops along the way where if we're a million dollars into this, and it becomes really clear to us and to staff that this is way too expensive and we should really just cut and run, that we are not committed to spending that entire amount. That's what I suggested.
Rep. Tim Holloway.
No, Mr. Shambles.
So I, I think you're asking for regularly scheduled meetings at, at Parks and Public Works to review the design status at that time. And that would take it to the committee level and not the full council level. Is that what I'm understanding? To make that decision, I'm going to stop?
I don't think that that's what I'm saying. I mean, I want to go partly down that road, but first, we need to cover, I think, a little bit bigger dinosaur, which is just, I want to make sure that we could stop this process at some point if, I mean, I want the council to make that decision, not just the committee, of course, but, you know, that as we do regular check-ins, same monthly or whatever, we decided that as we're looking at what's coming out of this process, and, you know, the committee's feeling like, oh, man, this is not looking good. We should probably refer this up to council, we're thinking that maybe we want to cut and run because this is looking way too expensive, or whatever, that we can do that. I just don't know, and I don't know if anyone knows, I've thought their heads of this contract allows us to do that, the, the one that's right in front of us right now.
Rep. Tim Holloway, and then Councillor Mayhew.
I believe the contract would allow us at schematic stage, if things are just going sideways, to say, stop. Okay, now you can stop and flow, or you can do start, stop, star, stop, star, stop, star, stop. If we do the start, stop, star, stop, it's going to take longer, okay? If we're, if we're breaking this up and doing separate authorizations, it's going to take longer. Okay, so I, there is options in the current contract, although you authorized 1.9, there is, we, we can stop it at any time, okay? It's to your point, Mr. Shambles, I think there should be, I want status reports back into public works, okay? But committees can't make council decisions. So the committee would make a recommendation to council, should make regular reports to council. And if it comes to the stage of, hey, the wheels have fallen off the car, it's time to stop it, committee should make recommendation to council to terminate contract.
So, Councillor Christensen.
One of the other concerns that I have too is if we're putting it to committee each time at, at multiple steps, in addition to costing additional time, it's also going to add a significant amount of money to the project. I don't remember exactly what the figures were when we spoke about it previously, but it was like $180,000 or more for every month or week, whatever it was, that made the pro, your entire project longer to build. And so I just, is, I know that we all really want to make sure that this is done well and done right. I just don't want to add so many stopping points that we end up costing ourselves and our constituents a lot more money without necessarily seeing the benefit that would go with that.
Let's see, to council member Warren, the actual cost for marketplace conditions, inflation, supply chain collapses is averaging between eight to 10%. It's just shy of 1% a month. Hasn't relaxed a lot, just a little. We have about $1.6 billion worth of projects up and down the I V corridor of Western Washington with all of these numbers. They are getting better. It's begun. But they're not there yet. So imagine this, you authorize this next step to move forward with developing the design through schematic and design development at 1.8 million. And your design builder gets busy. What gets busy means is they don't stop. They continuously work to design to that end gate. There aren't committees in council, things happening in the middle that pauses for a week or two between stages, not ever. That would be the craziest thing you could do. And what you do have, that you're standing, standing agenda item as a quick update from Mr. Hamlin at your council meetings. You have quick updates, and I don't know the names of your committees, but I'm sure there's one that addresses capital projects and public works or other.
Public works.
Right, so you have normal standing agenda updates on how we're progressing things like, we're at the end of schematic design. We have a target of a $28,000 project. Based on the scope so far, we believe it's trending between 26 and 29. As opposed to trending between 40 and 45. Then the question is, what does it have to be to be back at 28? It may be that the programs that you want, you can't afford at all. There it is. But you just forward that design and let them report to you constantly, especially at the end of SD. And if you need it in the middle of DD, design development, just because we're dialing it in. Design builders doing this all the time. So you can access that information standing report in all of your meetings and not slow them down and get to an answer sooner versus later. Because later, you can't afford tomorrow at all, but you barely can afford today. You won't know what that is. We'll go down from seven to five lanes, is it just one pool? If we do that, can we commit at 22.5 million? Great, those kinds of conversations are what's going to happen now, it's design project, you're going to start grinding, but I, Jim calls grinding down to get to what is the hit.
So, Councillor Mayhew.
Yeah, so I, I am, I'm really far more educated than I was before. I'm feeling a lot better about a path. My concern is, I'm not willing to spend 2 million bucks or 1.87395, whatever this number is. I'm not willing to spend that right now, but this sounds like a path where we say, you know what, we got to commit to a process. And what we can do is set up how we then interact with that process. We're not going to have start, stop. I think council member Christensen made a great point there. I think my sense, we all agree with that. So committee, can you just design a way that they keep moving? That we're going to have reg, we have chances to pull the plug on this along the way. Like in a million or whatever the number is, I don't know what it'll be, but somewhere along the way, I could get behind that as long as we just have that process set up, and I trust committee to execute that and come to council, and I trust committee to figure out what that process is, just go set that up, come back and tell us. Then I'm in.
Councillor Johnson.
I'm not sure what I said that gave the impression that I was suggesting start, stop. So I apologize for taking us down this weird little rabbit hole that was very much unintentional. What I was intending to say was what Mr. Dugan said much more eloquently than I did. It's just they keep going, but just they check in with us at Parks and Public Works, and then if things are looking really bad, then we just say, hey, council, we just need to put the brakes on this. I'm, I, I never meant to imply that they should come to us, you know, every two weeks, council says, no, 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 stop your work, we need to think for a little bit. Okay, now maybe you can go. I never meant to imply that. It would be just, they would keep doing their thing, but that they could check in or would check in with Parks and Public Works. And I just want to make sure that the contract language in my, my amendment to Councillor Mayhew's motion was, I want to make sure that in this contract here, we, we are allowed to do that.
It does.
Okay, if, if the administration is certain about that, then I am going to be opposed to basically our whole motion that's on the table, and I would replace it with something else because we're already three dinosaurs in.
Rep. Tim Holloway.
So I think the, the conversation you're proposing of intermediate milestones is, is a good conversation we should, we should have at Public Works. But what are definitive and intermediate milestones for us to have those discussions and say, hey, how are things going? As well as the normal back and forth, okay? I think we can have that without holding this up.
Oh, tonight.
Tonight. Let's take, put the onus back on Parks Public Works, come back, talk about what those milestones are, or the points under which we can, you know, do the sniff test, see if this still smells nice or doesn't. And, sorry, terminology, uh, we go, and go from there, but I don't think we need to hold this up tonight to do that. Is that almost is getting us back to, let's break this up into like five different things and whatever, I, I, what? We can stop it when we need to, let's define what are those, what are the milestones we hit, that which we actually look at and go, yep, let's keep going, yep, let's keep going, nope, let's pull it at this stage. Okay, and I think they're willing to have that conversation in Parks Public Works, helps our.
Right, so council, we've been on this an hour and a half, so maybe when we're coming, and should we vote on the amended motion? And then the final motion, Councillor Johnson.
For one thing, we'll keep going as long as it takes, but also when I think about this contract, what I, what I feel like I understand a little bit better now that they're asking for is not that they're going to give us some pretty drawings and say, oh, this is kind of what it's going to look like, is that, that this is essentially going to give us something that is build ready, it has highly technical schematics, was my understanding. That are probably things that I would never understand because I don't have a degree in engineering. But that a builder would understand, and to me, that probably does cost, just my guess, that probably does cost a significant amount. It costs a lot more than it does to make some really pretty pictures in Google SketchUp.
Right, and we have those.
Right.
Councillor Mayhew.
Yeah, it's, I think, the largest public works project the city's ever undertaken, certainly within decades. If it needs an hour and a half or two hours, it needs an hour and a half or two hours. So I just, that, that's, that's not go on record with the public that we, you know, we had some timer on this massive public works project, let's get it right. I think we are getting it right, okay, but I, I, I think I'm trying to get there with you, it's, it's such a large amount of money, 2 million bucks, and, and I'm just so worried about it, but maybe we're there. But you guys need to realize, if you really mean this, you're on a path, you're, you're not on the right path. This GMP is useless. We don't have the funding for the project we envisioned. We always envisioned that we were have to go get others to chip in money. So if we're really heading toward this GMP, guys, that means on that date, we have to have the other funding lined up. So we better have a whole plan. And I got news for you, earlier when the mayor, I mean, kudos to her, she said she's talking to legislators, she ain't getting this done on her own, you guys. We are going to have to help her. So we better have a whole plan, how that's how coming on, or this GMP is going to be useless. We're going to spend a bunch of money to get to a thing that we then go, halt, and spend two years trying to find the funding for. We, we got to do that simultaneously. There's a lot to this, fine, you guys in Parks and Public Works, work out the plan. I'm willing to go, you guys better work out a whole plan on this, you better monitor it, seriously. Because we voted on a bunch of money and 750s, whatever the number was, 11 months ago, I haven't heard anything else in council about it since. So this is, we're not getting the kind of flow of information anywhere near the flow of information that we need. That's my point of view, but if you guys fix that, then this could make sense.
Councillor Christensen.
So I, I have a comment in addition to what council member Mayhew said as well, and my thought was maybe should, in addition to having Parks Public Works focus on the upcoming plans and, and give count, or give feedback to council, is also come up with a plan for how we should all address going out and seeking additional funding with the legislators, is that something that would? we should all address going out and seeking additional funding with the legislators. Is that something that would happen in Parks and Public Works? Is something that would be FNA driven?
Let's take that one to FNA.
Okay, so let's, let's maybe formulate a plan at the same time as we're working forward with the design build. So that we can all feel comfortable with how it's going forward and we can really be strategic about where we're gonna go for funding. There are ongoing conversations with the school district as well and with the Y. But I think that it would be great if we could be as proactive on this as we can so that we really, once we have a final number, are assured of our ability to fund it. Would that make everyone feel more comfortable?
Eight is better than one.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, are we ready to vote on the, the? The new motion?
Or 3D?
But it was originally combined with the second.
This is a motion to send it to committee.
This one is return to committee to explore low cost design options or progressive approvals.
That's big.
In favor, say I? Any pose? Nay?
Nay.
Nay.
So that one does not pass unanimously against. So the original motion was to approve maybe 23-101. Oh, no, no. Which one is it?
Oh.
98.
Oh, 98.
Maybe 23-098 approving a design build contract with AppSure Construction for the community center expansion. Those in favor, say I?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any pose, nay?
So wait, that was the original motion from Councilor Mayhew or I'm sorry, I was confused there.
His was amended and then amended. And so you had the final one. So now we're back to the original motion.
I heard it on the amendments.
I'm sorry. Oh, right, because each of those.
Three baby dinosaurs.
Some were withdrawn because remember Council Benson withdrew his second and added a second.
Withrew one and changed it.
Okay.
So we couldn't withdraw motions.
Can't. Oh, we did.
My understanding, if the original motioner and the second agree.
They did.
That's not in Roberts.
I thought she said, yeah. About a dress of permanent lady said no. Go ahead.
You wanna go back and discuss it?
Let's get it right. This is a big thing. Let's just, it just take us a few seconds to get it right. Let's just do it.
Sorry to be stickler.
So we just put on the final, final. So then one before that was returned to committee to explore lower cost design options.
We voted no on that one.
We didn't vote on it.
Oh, we didn't? Okay.
No, but we, because we added his or progressive approvals.
Just take a swim there.
So now we're voting on or lower cost design options. On favor, say I? I'll pose no.
Nay.
So the other one had been pulled, which was minimum price needs for preliminary design. That one was pulled by the motioner and, and.
Just in case, let's just vote on it.
Was removed.
Just to be good.
Okay, all in favor, say I? I'll pose nay.
Nay.
Okay, so unanimous, it was nay again. So now we are back to the original motion. Which was AB 23-098 approving a design build contract with AppSure Construction for the community center expansion. Um, so those in favor, say I?
Aye.
Any pose, nay? All right, so it's unanimous and it passes. All right. Next item on the agenda is AB 23.
If we've been at this for three and a half hours, can we have a bio break, please?
Okay, with five minute break, we'll be back at 9:40. All right, it's now sick or 9:42 and we are back to our council agenda. So the second Parks and Public Works Committee report is AB 22-099 License Agreement with the Line Experience. Councilor Benson, would you please read the summary and motion?
Yeah, this would be AB 23-099. The city of Snoqualmie seats, seeks to execute a ground lease agreement with the Line Experience Incorporated, who will install a mountain bike education and rental kiosk at Snoqualmie Point Park to support and promote recreational opportunities for the community. Moved to approve the license agreement with the Line Experience Incorporated and authorize city administrator to modify the date for termination of the construction license to reasonably accommodate the time required for construction of the proposed improvements.
Second.
Move by Councilor Benson and second by Councilor Johnson. Is there any public comment regarding this item? So please raise your hand. Now we'll look online. Not seeing anyone online raising their hand. Nor in council chambers. We do have, listen, we have Nicole Weeby here that can answer any questions as well as our inner city administrator.
Thank you. So this agreement, there was a couple of things brought up at committee. So I wanted to show you a couple of things. What is going on with my computer? There you go. Maybe today, there you go. So this is the structure. It's in the process of being constructed. The white that you see behind is the roof of the building that's behind it. It's not part of the structure itself. The structure is the black box in front of it. And then this is a 3D printed model. It'll have two solar panels on top of, for some charging of the bikes. And there is a graphic that says the line with some paint treatment on the other side. It's not just a black box. It does not say pods on it, which was the specific concern of the committee. The other thing I would like to show.
That was me.
So there was also concern that these bikes would be confining themselves to the point park. So this is a map of the bike trails adjacent to the park. Snoqualmie, Snoqualmie Point Park is right here at the exclamation point. So the intention is for them to rent these bikes and then travel to these bike trails. Not to stay in a park that's not, doesn't have any features. The other benefit to this contract that's also in there is they would take over the maintenance of the Fisher Creek bike area. And there's some quarterly requirements for, for performance in the, in the document for that.
Councilor Benson?
One of the concerns when we were talking about this in committee is that people would be riding bikes in inappropriate spaces or spaces that were specifically for pedestrians. But I've since considered that concern myself. And I'm not particularly concerned about it. There already are a lot of people who do mountain bike up there. And it does not seem to me in my time that I've been in that area that, that they're being rude with their, with their bicycling. And I, I don't think that I would expect anything less of somebody who was going to, to rent a mountain bike. So I, that concern that was raised at committee, I feel comfortably, comfortable withdrawing. It seems like people know how to ride bikes.
Councilor Christensen?
Yeah, so I had a few different questions. First, whether there'd be any permanent features that were added. I saw in the agreements that there would be some temporary things they can move around that they'd store inside the pod. But will there be any physical alterations other than the gravel that they're laying down in landscaping?
And, and the landscaping, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then one of the other concerns that I had, are there back, I, and I just couldn't remember offhand, are there bathrooms available onsite?
Yes. About 15 feet away.
Okay, fantastic. I just wanted to make sure that if we're going to be having more people coming through, that there was not going to be issues there, especially if they're gonna be serving food, which is also helpful. Um, and then the one other question that I had is I know that sometimes and especially like our police patrol there at night. Will there be, I, I hope that there would be adequate security to make sure that as they're storing mountain bikes, that doesn't become a target.
Yes, that played a, a, a big role in where I'm intending to put it. So it's easier for it to be patrolled rather than down in the park where PD that when they come up and do the loop, won't have eyes on it. The, 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 Mr. Mike is, is hardening the structure appropriately for his investment. And that park is closed at night. So, but it also is patrolled regularly by the police.
I, I do also want to say, I really appreciate that they are gonna put in the work at the bike park over at Fisher because it, it really badly needs some TLC over there. So that would be fantastic to have on.
Councilor Johnson?
Uh, I was just trying to understand the, the length of the lease. Is it a total of seven years where there's an annual renewal that is automatic? What I, what I think I'm seeing here is that it will renew automatically for up to four additional terms after the first three. So I added, I added up seven. I just want to make sure I had that correct.
Correct, but you also have the option to cancel.
Okay.
In there also. So it's not, it's not, it doesn't have to run seven years.
Just want to make sure it wasn't like some, somewhere that I missed that it's also in perpetuity somewhere. So we can come back and look at it if we want to. Okay.
Councilor Mayhew?
Yeah, I, I had a similar question on the term. And I'm just curious if maybe the committee chair could, maybe you guys, I'm just curious if you guys talked about this or any thoughts. I'm, I think I'm concerned, but I'm not sure. So I'm curious what you guys thought about it, if you did, is it seemed like it renews for seven years. It, it doesn't seem like we, the council would have any involved. It sounds like it just renewed, that, that's a seven year deal. Unless the other guys back out or unless staff decides to back out. But that seemed like a long time to me. For, we don't usually do seven year agreements. You know, at, at the council, like we don't usually approve seven year kind of agreements. So that seemed like a long time. I was wondering, you, you know, what, what I sort of thought I would have seen was something where it comes back to council, at least at some point along the way for us to just, you know, green light and extension. But maybe you guys thought about this and I'm just curious what the thinking was.
I, I'm, and I mean, oh, sorry.
Councilor Benson?
I may, may have misunderstood it. My understanding was that after the third year that there was some review of that. Did I misunderstand that?
It's initial two year period. And then there's an additional four one year terms.
So and, and if, in a one year term, we would have an option to speak to whether or not we renewed it.
They're automatic.
It's, it's, they, they are the ones with the, with the option.
No.
No, no staff as well, just not council.
The extension is by mutual agreement.
Correct.
Both sides have to.
Administration and, but not council.
You actually have to, attorney, thank you. You actually have to take a step to terminate it. It renews automatically unless somebody steps in and says stop. So that's why an automatic renewal, it says automatic, but anybody can step in and say, stop. On any one of those one year anniversaries.
Otherwise it'd just be a seven year.
Councilor Watten?
Yeah, thank you. I had the chance, I stumbled across this business in North Bend a couple of weeks ago and had a chance to see it firsthand and, and Mike explained to me a little bit about his, his arrangement with this. And I, I have to commend him for coming up with this idea. It's very innovative and he wants to roll this out in other parts of, you know, across the country and he's got an amazing team. We, we, we have to keep in mind right now, our revenue source is zero. And whereas this lease agreement gives the city revenue, but it also expands for economic development in bringing people to the valley and, and helping them stay longer in the valley, which has a tremendous value back to the community. So I just wanted to, to mention that.
Councilor, Councilor Mayhew and then Councilor Washington?
Just following up on my question then. So my, just my question is, should there be somewhere in that seven years, maybe at the end of the initial term, maybe that's the right time? Where it does come back to council just for a, a check. It just seems like seven years seem long, but if the committee thought that it shouldn't, then, you know, I'd like to hear that, but otherwise I, it would seem to me we ought to have some check in along the seven years, maybe just one.
Sounds like we do.
Not the council, doesn't.
The agreement is not specific. It just is the, the city may terminate. So typically a license like this is for a use of city property is a council decision, who gets to use city property and for how long, so.
We had Councilor Washington was next.
Yeah, so it looks like at three years, it's, it, when it's set to renew it, that $10,000 mark plus a CPIU, is that typical of a license agreement like this?
It, it's typical property ground lease agreements. So yes. Okay. We don't have many of these agreements in the city to compare to, so, but, but it, when I was negotiating airport leases, there was always a CPI escalator in the lease to protect that, that value as, as the lease went along.
Councilor Benson?
It seems to me that if the council had a concern about this business after year three, like, you know, pedestrians are getting mowed down constantly by rented bikes, that we would have the op- option to say, hey, this isn't working out. And I direct city staff to not renew that agreement because we're tired of paying for broken pedestrians.
Councilor Johnson?
Can we direct staff to do anything?
We do it all the time. I mean, we, we just did it, we just did it at the, you know, we, we speak to staff and they.
Huh? I think it's more like a request.
Choose the word, choose the word. But yeah, I mean, we, we, we had a problem with the way traffic was being run on the, on the parkway the other day. We talked to staff about it and they took care of it. You know? What word would you like?
I think that if we wanted the city council to have the ability to take an action, then we would have to amend the contracts. That's my understanding of what's happening because it doesn't specify that it's a city council. I believe we were looking at section 12. I'm not mistaken.
Well, there's actually, I'm sorry.
Unless there are a couple of other spots.
Attorney?
Yeah, so the, the regular termination provision is, is section 12, but that's sort of the default termination rules. The actual license for construction installation and improvement, section four and the term, that's really where the, the term and the, and then okay, section five is for the occupancy and maintenance. So it's those two that contain their own kind of self-contained description of how long it's gonna last and when it's gonna end, so. But you're right, it does not specifically reference a role for council. We could certainly put that in if the, if the licensee was amenable to that, so.
Councilor Mayhew?
Yes, that's what I'm trying to figure out is whether to ask for a specific check in, you know, to put that in the contract that council has to, you know, approve, say at years. But I don't want to ask for that if the sense of the committee who spent more time with this is, hey, you know, like, there's a problem, we'll be able to bring this up at the time. Like, it'll, like, if you're comfortable that this is there, I, I don't want to add something just to add it. So that's, I'm trying to get guidance from the committees to whether we ought to add that in to require a check in or whether you just don't think that's needed.
Councilor Benson?
This reminds me of our conversation about permits earlier, where maybe we don't have to get, maybe we don't have to be the ones who make the decision, but we can talk to the people who do and say, I, you know, it, it really seems like this business isn't working out in this location. And, you know, think of that. I, I don't, I don't feel like, I don't feel like this is beyond the city staff handling it. And I, I, I don't, I've never gotten the sense that they don't listen to us, so.
Rep. Tim Hallway?
Yeah, so we did not discuss the specific item you're asking. So I'll give you my opinion, not the committee's. It's a box of bikes. It's, it's a box of bikes ultimately, okay? And to the length, the, the guy's putting an investment here, he needs some length of time under which he has some assurance that he can recoup his investment. Has some assurance that he can recoup his investment, so I have no problem with the two plus four renewals, okay? But ultimately, it's his livelihood, but to council, it's a box of bikes. So if we get forced to have the conversation, we can have that conversation with staff to say, this is not working out. What do we do? I don't think we'll get there. In the meantime, I'd rather not force a conversation on this if things are going smooth. Let it run, let staff administer.
Any further discussion? So, all in favor of the license agreement with the line experience, say aye?
Aye.
Any pose nay? So it's unanimous, and that agreement is approved. And council, it is nine fifty-eight, we will need a motion to extend the meeting past ten PM.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
So let's move by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Christian to extend the meeting past ten PM. All in favor of say aye?
Well, no discussion, point of order.
So we have a discussion regarding extending the meeting past ten PM?
We don't have time.
You, raise your hand, Jim.
Okay.
Just four hours, guys. I'm burned out. I'm completely burned out.
Hey, I think the only thing we have left is the thing you took off.
I think it's a long discussion.
And we also have an executive session, so.
Oh, executive session, is that what else on there, Mayor? And then some reports that I don't want, too tired to listen to.
Councilor Benson?
I, I, I agree with Councilman Mayhew, that I think the one that he's pulling off consent is going to be a long discussion. And I'm. I, I feel like we need to boot it to, to the next meeting.
Councilor Johnson?
Unless there's some urgency that we have to prove this within the next, you know, two weeks or something, then I'm in agreement. That we should boot that to the next meeting.
We'll look to our interim city mister.
Yeah, there's no urgency, I just really want it. I think, no, my family's on vacation right now without me, so I could be here tonight and explaining that to my family. It's going to be hard. But that's what I signed up for.
You can, you.
I mean, it's, it's my wedding anniversary, guys, and I'm here, I'd like to, like, get through what we need to get through so that we're just, we're done and we can move on. He's my husband, tell him I'm sorry.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
That's too funny, because it's mine too.
At the anniversary, about to be.
Okay, so we have motion.
If I get another one.
Question to extend, all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, but.
Oh, Council Watten? Was that I?
Nay.
I haven't asked for that yet. We have, so we have three ayes?
You gotta go to the other side.
We have three, I was, okay, those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
So we had some critical executive session that we needed to finish up, Rep. Tim Holloway?
So at least the motion to postpone the splash park till next council, second.
So there's motion to postpone the splash park to next council by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Johnson. Well, we're going past ten right now, any discussion? Oh, we got a vote, you gotta have discussion. Any discussion? Hearing then, all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Alright.
Any pose nay? Okay, so we move, vote to that.
So.
Rep. Tim Holloway?
So without getting into the subject though, is there, would next council still give us time for that conversation? To feed into the labor contract negotiations that are going on? Do we have to have that discussion tonight, or can we do it next council?
We don't need to have that discussion tonight.
Okay, from my sources, I'm hearing that, no, we do not have to have that discussion this evening.
You're kind of getting the sense of concern on the council's part. So move to postpone the executive session until next council meeting, second.
Okay, move by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Johnson. To postpone it, the executive session till next council meeting. Any discussion? Let me see if we have ten raised, no. All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any pose nay? Okay, so that is passed, we'll move that to the next council meeting. Alright.
Mayor, may I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Then move by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Mayhew to adjourn, all those in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Any pose nay? Alright, we are adjourned.
Sorry, Louis, I know you were to talk the.